All right. It's four minutes after seven. We will get right into our budget workshop number four evening. Thanks, everybody, for being here. And we have Pam Geary, Parks and Rec Director here this evening, and Lori Bora, who's the Chairman of the Parks Commission. And we will begin with you, Pam. So you're both welcome to come forward. We'll just have to pull an extra chair forward for you. But please join us at the table.
Parks and Rec has its own tab, number 11, and the expenses start on page 179.
The Parks and Rec crew is a member of the Public Works Union. So as we saw at Public Works, the union contract is open. So all you're seeing in their, not this first page is administration, but all you would see in the later pages is whatever step increase might be applicable to somebody on July 1st. The grid has not changed because we're going to start negotiations. So the first page is administration. And what you're seeing here is actually a slight decrease. And that has a lot to do with the fact that we're going to, last year we were 26.2 days, this year is 26.1. It's not a change in program or anything, not a reduction in hours.
And the transfer was from what?
The transfer, so you see those in all the full-time salary lines where there are non-represented employees because we budget at the current salary.
Oh, okay.
And then you get the raise, you know, come June will come to you for what the raise, and then we do the transfer to fund it.
Got it, got it, yeah.
Okay. How many full-time equivalents are in this particular budget?
In this one, there are, let's see, one, two, three, four.
Oh, and admin?
Yeah, the director, the assistant director, the, there's an admin and recreation or program supervisor.
So it's four full-time, FTS, okay. Was the professional services in 2016, that was the master plan, $28,000. That's line one.
Line one.
I trachal services.
No, our master plan.
It's the second line one. Yeah. From fiscal 2017.
1617, however you do it.
Yep.
That should have been, I think that should have been the master plan, but do you have any?
That would make sense.
No, the master plan was done out of capital.
Okay.
Right, I'm not sure where your, mine looks different than yours.
We're looking at, they're looking at history.
Right under the line below dues and professional licenses.
Oh, credit card fees. Right, because that was before you changed.
Before we changed the method by which we paid those.
It's just a methodology change.
Yep.
Could you comment on dues and professional licenses? I mean, obviously, it's a slight decrease, but double from last year or the year prior.
Because we have one more full-time employee, the recreation, the program supervisor. It's relatively new position.
Okay, so we have a new.
So those are dues to Connecticut Parks and Rec Association, the National Parks and Rec Association.
Okay.
For this individual, this new role. That's why the increase. But you have the director and the assistant director also paying dues to these organizations.
Any other questions on Parks and Rec admin?
I was looking at travel versus this document. What do we call this document?
Year-to-date.
Year-to-date. The travel. Where we have a encumbrance of 1,052.
Just want to make sure that where our travel is where we need to be. I think it's, based on my review, it is where it's fine.
We have a budget of 2624 for the current budget year. So remember, according to this document, it's not evenly divided.
Oh, okay.
There's timing.
Yeah, it's not, it's not something that you're going to see on an even basis throughout the year.
Correct.
Okay.
But it is .58.
Or .575.
That's fine. I mean, obviously, it's a small number. I just saw the 102 percent, 102.2 percent used.
I don't think that makes sense.
Right, that's where I'm trying to understand it.
More than likely, when that happens, it's because they submitted a payment and didn't charge, it didn't hit the PO. So it's just a matter of cleaning that up.
Okay.
Reducing the PO based on what was charged without hitting the PO.
And then, in that, so that's an interesting question. So on the office supply line?
Yep.
Is there a reason why it was so heavily used in the front, first half of the year?
It's, again, it's timing about when you might, you know, you might buy your paper, you know, upfront.
Right.
It's, I really would caution against.
I'm just curious, yeah.
Yeah. I'd have to go back and look at the individual expenses.
It's okay.
Yeah, you have to be careful. A lot of our line items are not evenly divided through the year. It's just the nature of the expenses. They come, sometimes they come in bunches, sometimes they won't come until, you know, late in the year, like.
For instance, we had a card swiper this year, July 1st, that just went, we had to replace, and we took it out of office supplies, but it was a whack to our office supply line.
I'm sure.
Was unexpected.
Yeah. So you might not see, you know, you have that one big hit, and then you might not see something that big again the rest of the year. Could be uniform. But things like, you know, say conferences and meetings, you know, if Pam's annual conference has gone into April, you're not going to see that hitting.
Till second half of the year.
Okay, any other questions for Parks and Rec admin?
Can I ask a silly question?
Nothing is silly.
And I'm not sure where it falls. So somebody was asking me about the dog poop bags.
Office supplies?
Well, I wasn't sure, like, where that falls because I just didn't see it right. Thanks, Kip.
It comes out of the facility.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's like a lot of office supplies.
So that's under line five here, under, on page 179?
It's not, it's not until next week, like 182.
I'll table that.
Sounds worth.
Yep.
Big subject.
But we do spend a lot on them.
We do. Well, we won't be anymore.
We are? We're getting rid of them?
No, but we're going to be monitoring them very heavily. And so we put signs into the parks and everything as well.
People are using them.
They take them?
They, they come to the parks without their own because we provide them.
Sure. But they're not, they're not taking, are you suggesting they take more than they need for their use at that time?
I think what, it's a medley of things. I think that the park crew, when they're empty, they order them, they fill them. When they're empty, they order them, fill them, and they're not, we have a restricted amount of money here.
Yeah.
And so at this point, we realize we have too many stations out there. So we reduced that. We put signs in there saying it's a courtesy.
Okay.
You know, the bags are a courtesy, and once we run out of the money.
We're a bring-your-own-bag town now.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think one of the things that's happened is because of the plastic bag bins. People just don't have the plethora of bags in their cabinet.
But I've bought a box of, you know, dog bags. You're just going to buy them. So.
I like it.
Okay. Moving on to beach and court facilities.
I do have a question. Could you talk just in general, we see beach parking permits as a revenue number. Could you just talk a little bit about our permits up-down, month cost, price up-down? Because I see a net number, but I don't know how you, revenue is a function of price versus volume. So could you talk a little bit about permit sales gone up?
Yes.
Price constant, just so we have a little bit of color on that.
We've not changed the pricing.
Okay.
We've been holding it flat.
Okay. Since 17, 1617?
It went up $5 since I've been here.
Right, but in the last two or three years, we have not increased it. We just voted on the fee schedule for this coming year, and we did not increase it.
It's an increase of sales.
Okay. I think it's helpful to see because it gives perspective that.
And it's also.
Selling more permits, it's not that it's a function of just raising the cost.
We are, and we're also raised, we made more money at the gate. So maybe one year was really rainy, and so our daily gate figure was lower, which is included in that 338. So this past year, we had, I mean, we might have brought in 20, I believe it was something like $28,000 at the gate. So that was non-resident daily.
And that's an increase over previous years?
Yes.
Yeah, that's great.
So the permit price has been constant for, we'll say, since actual 1718?
Yeah.
About?
Two to three years.
Okay.
It's been a while since we increased it. And you did tell me that last year, you actually ran out of stickers, yeah, the resident stickers.
Right, so we had to buy more.
Had to buy more, so.
So we opted a little bit this year.
And is this all actualized in the fiscal year, that it would end June 30th? Or how do you see your?
July 1st.
July 1st. So this is all prior to July 1st of that appropriate year? Because it's hard for you guys because you're a summer program. So I was wondering, how do you look at?
July 1st.
Okay.
Sales go right through beginning of September, believe it or not, we'll get a few there in September.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
Those hold on until the next spring.
So you push those into the next year.
And so then those spring opens up sales again in April.
Okay.
So then you get, this revenue also includes April, May, June.
Perfect, okay, that's why I was curious. Which makes sense, how it should be.
It's probably appropriate to note at this time that we now have to charge sales tax on the beach permits. So I think we were going to be checking in on whether the active software can automatically add the sales tax to the transaction, correct?
I was checking on the parking, but yes, you should check on that.
Wait, I've asked him to put a call into them already.
Okay.
We did have some discussion at the commission meeting about whether what we charge is in fact a parking fee or an entrance fee, and concluded, at least given the sales tax coming into place, that because we don't charge walk-ins, as some other communities do, that we defaulted to saying that, at least for now, that we probably should consider it a parking fee and impose.
Got it.
The sales tax. I think that's something that the commission could, the commission could possibly discuss at some point, is whether we really are intending to charge an entrance fee, which would mean some kind of monitoring for people who do, you know, walk or bike in. We absolutely have started to get some complaints about the level of out-of-towners who are purchasing passes and coming into the beaches and/or people who are.
Dropping off.
Who are getting dropped off or walking down, and some desire from the community for us to find a way to control that. So I think it's something the commission will need to think about. It's somewhat of a philosophical discussion as well.
And a very sensitive conversation.
Absolutely, absolutely. So for purposes of this budget, the fiscal 21 budget, the commission just said, you know, we will consider it a parking fee, make sure that our documentation labels it as a parking fee, because I think the fee schedule is a little bit unclear as to what it was. So call it a parking fee and impose, impose the sales tax for now.
And we didn't add that in the park schedule.
Right, right, and we didn't add it in the schedule. It's just.
Noted it at below that.
It's going to be a revenue and an expense, so it's a wash.
Right.
Doesn't make any difference.
Okay.
Could you talk about paddle, what's going on while you, what your thoughts were there?
With the paddle court revenue? Well, we held it high, Kip asked me this last year, too, actually, because it was, it was on its way, it was going up, we kept bringing in additional revenue, and then it kind of flattened out. And I kept in that 70 because I thought maybe it was just a, you know, a different season, weather-related. But it's, it's still holding at that 59. So I opted at this point to come in and try to be more realistic about our numbers and put it down to 60.
So that.
Year-to-date was 40.
Yeah, right. We still have time left in the season.
Yeah, people rent it through June.
Is that, yeah, that's a good question. Does it go through June, the rental?
Not, not this particular line. This is through March, end of March.
End of March.
And then it kicks into the paddle court, the paddle hut rental, building rent.
Right.
This is separate.
This is just for.
Winter.
Building rent is, yeah, from, basically from April, May to the season.
When does the season actually start for the courts?
October, they start booking.
So you're seeing about three months revenue.
Right.
But some people pay upfront. They're not paying by.
It's block time.
Yeah, they're paying for the block upfront. So you'll see a little heavier, more than 50% in the first three months. Right. As I say, kind of to Kip's point, if you're at 40 now with two months left.
Three months, January, February, March.
You've not realized February?
You're looking at.
Okay, good, well, that's good. Thank you. But because some people, some people pay for a block of time upfront.
Right.
So you're getting, that's more than three months, you know, they're paying for the whole season.
Right.
Okay, so you still feel that that's, you'll get up?
It all depends on weather and, you know, consistency of play.
Okay, no.
So we'll see how the numbers shake out this, this winter. It's been very busy, and so it's a guesstimate.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask about the concession? I'm not entirely sure how that works. Is there a revenue that you get? Is there an agreement? How does that work?
There is now. There had not been.
Oh, interesting.
For many, many years.
Okay.
So in the last two years.
Okay.
We have negotiated $3,000.
A year.
It's de minimis.
Yeah, a summer. And we tried to break it up into both facilities, but the concessionaire said he, because the facilities are not very nice up there, he doesn't make any money. So we just opted to negotiate at the three for Weed Beach.
So three a year?
Right now.
And, you know, when you see, when we get to the Capitol, you'll see there's a request to purchase equipment for the kitchen. The majority of the equipment in the concession area at Weed Beach now is owned by the company that has been providing the service. We want to put in our own because it's a real handicap to put this out to bid and ask bidders to bring in their stuff, too. You know, pay us for the right to sell food there, and by the way, you have to bring the stove and the refrigerator and all that. So we feel that we can do better for the town if we equip the kitchen facility.
And like Greenwich doesn't accept a bid for any lower than 7,500 for their concession. And here, we have two, two beaches that could be stripped, so.
And where do we see that? You'll see that in the Capitol when we get there.
No, the revenue, revenue line item.
No, the revenue. It's probably in miscellaneous because it's so small.
Or in pro, it may even be in programming. Not certain where that goes.
But I think for some years, Pam's saying the town wasn't charging him.
Right.
At all, but it really.
I'm just curious. I don't know how that works. Thank you.
When you look down at the expenses related to the beach, you'll see an increase in the seasonal temporary salary.
Before we go to, before we go to that, I'm just going to point out the building rent, which he says is the paddle hut, at $12,000 is inconsistent with page 178, where the paddle hut rental revenue is 15.
Okay.
Line eight, page 180 is 12. Page 178, second line down, paddle hut rental revenue performance measure is 15.
Oh, performance measures.
Yeah.
Should that give a 12?
It's an inconsistency, right?
Yep, yep.
It's administrative.
That was definitely something that was cleaned up for budgeting, but those are my, my Excel sheet and hit the performance measure. Yep.
So the $12,000 is the correct number the town administrator proposed?
Yes.
I did not change, that was the request, or that was the estimate provided by the department, and I did not change it.
Mm-hmm.
It is a reduction from the current year's estimate, but based on history, I think the $12,000 is more accurate than the 14.
Okay.
We had brought in, it was a quick increase in the last, like, three years, and we were watching it just go up, getting more busy, more busy, and then it kind of just stayed at that.
Levelled off, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, there's only so many weekends that you can rent it.
Yep.
So it's not heavily rented during the week, so.
So I'm sorry, where is the concession located?
We're not sure.
Off the top of my head. Okay. It may be in the building rent.
I think it might be in facilities, type of facility, but we can find that out pretty easily.
I would tell you, it doesn't, it definitely doesn't have its own, because it's not significant. All right, so then down on the expenses, we would like to increase the rates we pay for the water pump coordinator by $2 an hour to be more competitive with our peer towns. So that's the increase you're seeing there, otherwise it's a stable budget.
The line four.
Line four, yes. Sorry, I'm not in the habit, I've got to get used to the numbers. These are the, this is the crew, the union members that I spoke about. So just recognize that this, the contract is open, so this only reflects steps, it doesn't reflect any change in the grid. We are using less seasonal and temporary because of, we did last year add a full-time person, but we also, labor laws limit what we can do in terms of seasonal and temporary and have them be considered actually seasonal and temporary, not full-time permanent or part-time permanent. So we're using less seasonal employees than we used to use. And Parks and Rec is one of the areas that really got hit with that. If you look at the equipment, line 10, equipment maintenance, that reduction was simply based on historic costs, going back to where historic costs had been. And the other one that was significant was the tires, line 16. We're just returning to normal. It's, you know, similar to what we see in Public Works periodically, we'll have a bubble with the purchase of tires, where we have either more expensive tires or more tires that get purchased in one year. So this is returning to a normal.
Can you talk about operating supplies? Showing year-to-date zero, used 213 last year.
So one thing we found last year, when we did the budget, was that there were some expenses that were not being charged to the right account, and this was one of them, where the expenses were being charged to, I'm trying to remember if it was equipment repair, but they were being charged to the wrong account. So we did bring the budget back up to where it had, in the area where it had been historically. This is, you know, again, one of those things that you're not going to see it evenly expended through the year. Where does it, does it? It's zero year-to-date this year, still. But as the spring season hits, I would expect that money to get expended.
Exactly. Insect and sun repellents, saw blades, gloves, yeah.
Okay, so it's a spring expense. Yep. And we expect to see more expenses here than we saw last year because they were in different buckets compared to 213. Right, in fiscal 19, they were being charged to the wrong account. If you look back to fiscal 18, you see the more normal number for that account. Okay, okay, so it was an aberration in 1819. Yes, yes. And who gets clothing? The union members. It's part of their contract.
All set with recreation, facility maintenance? Jack.
Kate, I know you did this, but if we increase this one, what is the account going to decrease to offset the?
You're, I, I can answer you later because off the top of my head.
Fair enough.
Okay, are we all set?
Yep.
Okay. Organized recreation and events.
Okay, so this one is a difficult one. Yeah. I know there's a story here. Yeah.
Going gross rather than net.
Right. Is that, okay. So what we used to do was we, we have, so many of our Parks and Recreation programs pay for themselves.
Yes.
What we charge the, you know, participants covers the cost of the program and actually provides some profit. We used to run that all through a balance sheet account, so you didn't see it impacting the budget. What we did, what we would do is quarterly reconcile and take the profits, and they would go into the Parks and Rec revenue account. So effective last year, those are all going through the budget. So you saw a huge increase last year in the revenues. You also see a huge increase.
In the fees.
In the fees. But the revenues increased. The revenues are at 665, and the fees are at 517, so.
Yes.
We are, you know, this is to the good.
It was in an attempt to be more transparent in terms of the cost of running the programs.
I complained too many times.
No, well, yeah, it makes sense.
It's not a complaint, it's a question.
I was confused too many times.
It was confusing before.
No, that's a big jump.
Yes. Okay, so here we're just showing the revenue from the programs. Correct. And on the next page, you will see what the programs cost us.
Yep.
And the only change with the increase you see here in printing, and I think we've got to think about where this is charged, but that's because the costing of the, the printing the beach stickers is more costly.
Mm-hmm.
But why we charge them to this account and not to beaches, I don't know. So we'll have to think about that one.
So line item?
Line item eight, the increase is because of the.
No, I got that.
Okay, sorry.
I was on to the next. The program expenses line at 517 is unchanged from prior year, and the, looks like the Parks and Rec program fees is down $5,000, right?
Yes.
So on a net basis, we're slightly worse off.
Yes.
I had a question about program expenses. In the year we're in right now, did we budget for some programs to be at Highland Farms?
Yes.
Okay, so that's why we don't see an increase this coming year.
Right.
We already budgeted.
We've been waiting.
Yeah, been waiting, but you haven't, we anticipated in last year's budget.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Can you talk briefly about the junior sailing program, line five on page 184, why that standalone, do we see offset revenue? Two-minute overview. You know, this, what we do effectively is provide a grant in support of the program, but what really happens is their payroll runs through our system, and they reimburse us the majority of the cost. It's, I'm really not thrilled with the concept because, once again, these, that makes them our employees, our responsibility for workers' comp, fight, well, the fight that they reimburse us for, but it's our responsibility. They're our employees, so if something happens, they're ours. I'd rather straight out give them the grant.
That's really a policy decision on the part of the commission, on how they want to run the junior sailing program.
And it may be possible that if we don't provide that service for them, that they can't run it.
Right.
So.
But to clarify, and we don't run it, per se. We allow it to take place on a beach, and there have been accommodations that the town has provided over a number of years, but we're not managing a program.
No.
So of the $4,500 that we budget, what's the reimbursement? How much do we get back? What's the subsidy?
The $4,500 is the subsidy.
Right. Right, they reimburse all but $4,500.
Oh, I see, okay. Oh, I see, okay. So where do we see? Total cost of program. It nets against that one account.
I'm sorry, can you say that again? We're netting, so Jen can look up and see what the actual number is that could spend. But say it was $15,000. They would be giving us a check for $11,500, if I did the math in my head.
Okay. And it's about $17,000, $18,000 in the last year. It does vary a little bit based on how many hours they work.
Ten-five, yeah.
And we see that number where, your $11,000?
If you look at that year-to-date budget report.
Where would I see it in the budget? What do you budget it?
You won't see it in the budget. It's, what's presented in the budget is the net number.
So we're netting here?
Yes. It just seems funky to me.
It is funky.
It is. Is there a better way to do it? Yes.
Okay. So, so it's a policy decision?
Okay.
It's not, it's not an issue that we should adjudicate during the budget season?
No, fair enough.
And we need the commission to weigh in on how they want to continue to deliver the program?
Okay. But even if we decide that we continue to, we want to continue supporting it in this way, we could gross it up and have a revenue offset.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, to the point where we did with the other programs, where you broke it out, why are we netting here, which we've discontinued in other ways? No, no, if anything about, at least if that would be.
I'm asking because it's the answer that, you know, one of those answers that I hate, because we've always done it that way.
Oh, then. I think the slight nuance might be that the other programs or programs where Pam and the department are going out and contracting with individuals to deliver a yoga class, to deliver a crafts class, or whatever it is, and it is her staff who's going out and doing it. The Darien Junior Sailing, it's a separate 501(c)(3).
It could be cleaned up if they handled their own administration.
I think Chris is comparing it to At Home and Darien, which.
I'm thinking of a whole bunch of. Right, so, but we have allowed them over many years to, you know, run the sailing program on town property and provided, you know.
Oh, yeah, clearly, I'm supportive of the program, just for the record, very supportive of the program.
But in other words, it's, it's not, like Pam, she said, we want, as part of Parks and Rec, to go and deliver a sailing program. And it's just this separate entity that's been handled differently than.
All right, well, that's.
She and her staff sitting down each year and say, okay, what programs do we want to offer to the community? And they revisit each year, what programs are doing well, which aren't doing well. Is there something new we want to add, or whatever? This is sort of aside.
Well, independent of any decision from the commission, perhaps just from the record and the budget perspective, that we see it outlined in a twofold.
That would be maybe for next year, if no change is made on the commission's side.
I think where it differs from At Home and Darien is, whatever we budget for At Home and Darien, we know that they're going to reimburse us the full amount. So there's no tax impact based on uncertainty of what reimbursement we're going to get. For this, it wouldn't be a huge impact, but it is kind of an unknown what the reimbursement is going to be because it's based on the true cost of their program, but we subsidize $4,500. So I think that, back at the dawn of time, because of that uncertainty, it was, let's just net it against that one account because if we miss on the revenue, it's just, it's not a known, the revenue from them is not a known number.
Yeah.
But the $4,500 is the known number.
We can put our heads together and look and see if there's a better way, even if all we are doing is footnoting for you in the documents so that you see the numbers. Thank you.
We don't have tremendous insight every year into how other program does. We usually ask them to come in the spring and kind of talk about what's happening, and then ask them to come back in the fall and recap how many participants they had and whatever. But we're not actively involved, and we're, they're, it's a volunteer organization.
It's changed hands, many times.
The participation has ebbed and flowed depending on the level of adult volunteerism that they've had, et cetera, so.
Well, maybe you do something for you guys to think about, is this the best arrangement? Given what you've just said. Yeah, and I think, you know, just to have that basic conversation that Darien Parks and Rec desires to deliver a sailing instruction program, right? And, and you choose to provide that program through this mechanism, you know, the Darien Junior Sailing Program, you know, just to make sure that, that you and the commission are always revalidating the fact that you want to, through Darien Junior Sailing, provide that program.
Right, and I believe we've effectively done that by making sure that they come in and meet with us each year and talk about the program and what's working for them, and where they're struggling, et cetera. They were struggling quite a bit a few years ago. And their numbers have come back to, there were a few years where it was questionable if they were viable to the point where we were talking about, you know, how might, you know.
And historically speaking, there was a time that I understand that Parks and Rec did have to take it over because they were struggling. And so it was full-fledged in our office for some bit of time before the group was healthy enough to take it on over again.
And just full transparency, I've always been in support of it becoming a Parks and Rec program. That's where I would lead, my personal opinion.
It's a 501(c)(3).
It's a 501(c)(3). I mean, they can continue to run it, they would just have to figure out.
As long as the kids are learning how to sail, that's my objective.
Safely.
Okay, Jack?
Quickly, I think, I'm typically against netting, but I think the big thing here is, when I look at the Board of Selecting and Operations budget, different from the Board of Ed, Board of Ed is a net number, where the operations for the Board of Selecting stand alone, so gross up there. The revenue, once we figure out all of what's needed to be raised by taxes, the revenue then is a deduction from there. So while we'd be doing something that we could see here on the budget size, it actually would increase expenses, and we wouldn't really see the decrease because it's just an adjustment in the tax. Although, on record, I would prefer that it's grossed up as well.
Any other questions about organized recreation events? Okay, moving on. Grounds, fields, and buildings?
On the revenues for grounds, fields, and buildings, do you want to just go to the expenses? Okay, expenses on page 186. A few things I'll point out. Tree maintenance, Pam did ask for more, and I did cut it. You know, my comment on this is, you know, we could spend probably as much as we gave her. We could spend in tree maintenance. So I'm just trying to be mindful of increases in the budget. I did increase it, but not to the extent that was requested. Five, facility repair and maintenance. We didn't have the level of detail that I would have liked last year when this budget was put together, so I did cut the, cut this account last year. And it, I believe it needs to be restored to the level that has been at in the past. So I did agree to the increase, looking at historic actuals.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
If we were to repair the basketball court at Cherry Lawn, would those costs come out of that account, or would that be a capital expense?
Depends on the kind, it depends, it's probably a capital. Because I think.
I have no idea how much it would cost, so I don't know.
Well, yeah.
A lot?
It's listed as 90 in the capital.
Oh, it's in the capital, okay.
For 2022.
Okay.
Whether that's the right number or it's close.
Is that for a full court?
Well, Pam's got a bid when we get to capital.
Okay. All right, we'll talk to her when we get there.
Thank you.
And then the only other thing I wanted to say, the, looking at the electricity, potable water, sewer use, all that stuff, those are based on historic actuals. And I just, Park and Rec does a really good job of tracking the utility usage in the different parks. So I believe those to be good numbers.
Can I ask a question on the, back on the trees? So if you ask for more, we're giving, budgeted 16?
This year was 14, what we're proposing is 16.
No, but the ask was higher.
Yes.
Is there a, are trees going to die? Is it a safety issue?
We've just been doing a lot of work in the parks from unhealthy trees, limb work, you know, trees just needing attention, and you can see it in the historical numbers. So, you know, we've had, we did have an accident in one of the parks a couple of years back in Woodland from a tree limb. Granted, totally different situation, not the town's fault by any means, but we do have two nature preserves that, you know, quite big. And I, it was just, it was a, to me, I just looked at the historical numbers and said, we're just doing a lot more tree work, and we should be on top of it. And.
It is a safety issue, I just want to make sure that if Pam expends the budget and identifies a tree, that's a problem. We have to be able to get the funds to take care of it immediately.
We always prioritize safety issues, for sure.
And Wade's containers would be the garbage containers, yeah? Is 3,000 enough?
That number.
That's a replacement.
Yeah, replacement.
Oh, that's a replacement of the container.
Yeah, I had a question about that.
Got it.
Why now, 3,000?
We're replacing, is that one, one of the three?
Right, there's so many different cans that are out there now that our guys go and clean up. And, you know, over time, we just need to replace some, start, you know, the tops are coming off and they're not working. And there are times when we don't spend much out of that because we're going to get by another year with the cans that we have.
You'll see it pop up periodically. We don't do it every year.
Oh, yeah, no, I see zero, zero.
$400, 3,000. Yeah.
How many containers does that 3,000 replace?
They're expensive, not many. And it all depends, I mean, you can, you can get a can that's $2,000. You can get, you know, one that's 800, but they're very expensive, our containers.
I just wondered how many you're planning to replace?
When we do a walkthrough, and we'll make sure, come this spring.
Before you go to capital?
Yep.
Just two questions. These were brought back in your description of your business back in 174. Why does the Park and Recreation Department take care of the Police Department grounds?
What page are we on?
That's interesting.
174.
Oh, oh. Because the, I don't know who the Police Department had taking care of it. And, and our Parks crew wanted it to look nice, so they offered.
They found a window of opportunity to be able to help them out, and.
Now you're stuck. Now you're stuck. And, and you talk about the number of acres that you take care of. The new east picnic area for the Short Lane property. How many acres does that mean you have to take care of there? Do you have any rough ideas?
I believe that, that property was only a half acre.
Short Lane?
Yeah, yeah, half acre.
Okay.
Yep, so we've cleared out, I want to say, less than a half acre.
You've answered my question. I thought maybe that was a 25 acre or something like that. Okay, thanks.
It will increase once we're able to.
Right, we've budgeted about 25 acres in its entirety.
Got it.
Including the Short Lane?
Yes.
Because I know your costs go up, you have to do Highland Farm now.
Okay, are we going to move on to capital?
Yes. So the first one up is $11,000 to replace valves on the irrigation system out here at Town Hall. And by replacing them, we'll be able to conserve water and keep the fields in good condition. It would point out, we do follow the aquarium regulations on water conservation. And I think Parks and Rec has done a nice job with the fields, with those conditions.
What other town fields have irrigation?
Doesn't McGowan have it?
McGowan has, McGowan has it for the.
Cherry Lawn has it on the soccer field.
And for some reason I had in my head that the fields out front here are frequently wet due to the water table levels.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we need to irrigate them too?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, and again, that's only, you also see it when it's in a very dry state. So it's, it's not always wet. During rain, heavy rain, you're going to see that thing, it doesn't drain well. But it's not necessarily always wet.
And it's not, it doesn't reach, the wet doesn't reach all the way down to the post-road.
Got it, so it's regionally wet?
Yes, it is.
And I, and we monitor it with our new system that we have too, so we've actually saved water.
Weed has irrigation too, doesn't it? Weed Beach.
Weed Beach, irrigation?
I don't remember putting it in.
I don't know where, where irrigate, there's no fields there.
No, there's no fields.
So the next item is the concession equipment for Weed Beach. So, and, go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, this is, as I said before, the concessionaire owns the majority of the equipment that's there now. And that poses a problem with our ability to actually put the right to operate the concession out to bid and generate the most revenue we can for the town. So what Pam has proposed is to purchase the equipment then when we bid it. And so it wouldn't be until actually next summer that we would be able to do this. But we'd be able to put a bid out to, to vendors, and I think get a much better deal for the town because we'll be providing equipment, not asking them to come in and bring their own.
And have there been conversations with any potential alternate bidders? I mean, do we know that there are?
Yes.
Bidders that would choose to bid?
Yes.
And do we have some framework for what we think would differ? So we're getting three grand a year now. Do we have some idea in our head what we think we would want to charge for a concession?
Well, you can only, for instance, I said briefly before that, you know, Greenwich won't accept anything below 7,500 for their concessions. And we've talked to various towns along the shoreline, so it does vary. My particular town, they take the highest bidder.
Well, that's what we would do in this instance.
And how do we decide what pieces of equipment are needed or desired?
I believe you did an inventory of what's there and what we would like to, so, you know, the obvious refrigerator, freezer, stove.
So those are the three things that are in there?
No, no, there's more. We do have a list that we can send around.
Yeah, I'd be curious.
Well, I'd like to ask kind of a bigger picture question. Before, I'm wondering if the commission has had a holistic discussion on what, what do you want concessions to look like for the future at our beaches? Not to necessarily assume that we want to continue to provide the variety of food services that we do currently. Do you want to rethink concessions as we're moving into a period when we're looking at getting a new concessionaire and we've got to buy all this equipment? I think it'd be a good time to, you know, really talk about what you want to provide. You might want to scale back what we provide.
Yeah, the commission did discuss the kitchen, kitchen equipment, excuse me. We absolutely having discussions with regard to periphery of what the right solution might be. But with regard to Weed Beach, the commission was fully supportive of maintaining a full concession and therefore having control by having our own equipment. It's not just that we can't go out to the highest bidder. The commission is concerned about the quality of the product that's delivered to the community, the variety, the look and appeal of the concession stand itself, frankly, which I haven't been happy with. So it's really, this is, you know, one of our premier parks, and we believe that that, you know, that's front and center. It's right in our main building, and that we really want the opportunity to, to offer the best, you know, quality product to people. I have a couple of questions. To Kate's point, I hear you, but if we are able to increase the revenue we're able to receive with the concessionaire, if we get 7,500, that would pay for the 30,000 over time a little more quickly than the 3,000. I'm curious, though, when I look at, I mean, are these commercial-level fridge, freezer, and stove? I mean, I know when we look at the senior center, there's a maintenance contract. We have to kind of put those in the budget.
Yes, we will.
Is that encapsulated in this 30,000 or no?
It wouldn't, you wouldn't be seeing those until the following year because we have a previous one.
Okay.
Do we have any idea for, like, insurance and maintenance costs on an annual basis for?
No.
I'm trying to, you know, we're saying that, you know, conceivably we'll go from 3,000 to 7,500 or higher. I'm trying to sort of get, wrap my head around what's the net going to be because there are going to be some expenses related to deploying the equipment. And as part of the equipment, we don't have the components like the commercial venting systems, fire suppression systems, all those things. Those are already in there, and those don't belong, those are, they already belong to the town, they don't belong to the vendor.
They belong to us.
They're fixed to the realty.
Can I clarify then, so this 30,000, which you have asked for and approved, replaces all the equipment, so makes the equipment now fully, that kitchen concession area is fully Darien supplied?
Yes.
So there'll be no ask for next year?
Pardon?
No ask, you have zero, so I'm confirming no ask for the following year.
For equipment?
Correct.
But the, the timing of the replacement would be?
Well, because, because it wouldn't, the budget doesn't go into.
Bid would be the following year.
Right, right, exactly.
It would be the fall or winter.
Replace the equipment in the fall, get the, the concessionaire to remove their, their items that clean up. Replace the equipment in the fall, get the existing concessionaire to remove their, their items that clean up, whatever needs to be cleaned up and make space for the new equipment.
Okay, so thirty thousand commits us to this program of going after it.
Yeah.
Couple of quick questions. Have we talked to a couple of concessionaires about the type of equipment that might be appealing?
The good news is the cup is empty.
It's a stink bug.
I can't see what kind of a bug that is.
If you don't, it'll be, it won't go to anyone.
I'll take your point.
It's a little stink bug. It'll harm. It's a fairly large one.
As you're asking the question.
By your coffee cup. You might not want it.
Can you zoom in on that channel?
It's a little aggressive. Have we talked to any concessionaires about the kind of equipment that might be appealing to certain concession? I mean, I know all the equipment is different, so somebody might want to-
I'd say there's a pretty standard amount of equipment that's in there. Weed Beach happens to have a nice amount of space in there to house. What he gave me, I got the inventory from the current concessionaire right now. And, and again, I mean, you could put more or less.
No, I just was curious.
But I think to Jamie's point, that's the, some of the discussions we really have to surround Pear Tree because the space isn't nearly as large as what we have at Weed Beach today, in the proposed design.
So I think Jamie's point is right. I mean, something like, very different, maybe a food trucks or, I don't know, might be appealing. I, might be something the commission would look at, I don't know.
We've been- Food trucks are actually a little bit of an issue because we have zoning regulations.
Yes, I know, I know.
And there's noise and there's lots of pros and cons about everything.
They're very unreliable.
Yep. So, you know, we've, we've, we've had discussions around prepared food, you know, but coffee and at least a place that you still can go and dine. You know, if you wanted to go get coffee and a drink and a sandwich and a salad and make it appealing because the place is so beautiful.
No, I, I would agree. I, I guess I was curious if maybe, you know, if you had a certain kind of oven, maybe that would appeal to a vendor that sold pizza. I don't know if a certain kind of oven that had a, you know, or a fryer would be better for burgers. I just was curious if you had a particular vendor in mind.
So I guess, to sort of piggyback on your question is, what I'm hearing is if we're looking to replace, basically replace the equipment that exists there currently, we're looking to have a menu that is similar, not maybe necessarily exact with what's currently offered there.
We would certainly want to be able to offer what I would call the, you know, the typical beach fair that many people want. However, we definitely hear from people.
The basic thing that all the kids want, you know, french fries, chicken.
French fries, hamburgers, hot dogs, whatever. But, but definitely we hear from members of the community, they would also like some healthier options as well. So some prepared food. A healthier option doesn't, we haven't done a formal survey, but definitely as we talk to people and hear at our different Pear Tree meetings and whatever. I mean, some people definitely say we have like a healthier option, but, I mean, healthier option.
And Tiara, one of our commission members, has been charged with trying to get more detailed information. So she's been, you know, surrounding her neighborhood and friend circle.
I wonder if it might be interesting to somehow survey folks, hand them a survey or direct them to one when they purchase the beach department. You know, as they're planning on attending. We'd love your input.
Yeah, because I'd be, I'd be curious if there are any, have been any sort of issues with food quality, cleanliness, other types of things like that, would exist.
In the past?
Yeah.
Do you want to speak to our food consultant for the school?
Yeah.
I'm not sure that's something else.
I think that's a great idea and I think that's something that we could probably accomplish.
We, we did need to ask several times this fall to have the facilities.
Post the rating on?
Yeah. There was food left, you know, once, you know, in the refrigerators, once they were turned off. Oh, there's been challenges.
Do we, I should know this. Does the health department post a rating at the beaches?
I, I don't believe so. I think that they're in-
Are they, are they?
I don't, I don't know. I know we get their, their sheets that they write off and they check them out.
So there should be a rating posted.
The rating on there, but I don't, I don't know that it's posted.
It's supposed to be.
For citizens.
Okay, so maybe it is because Dave's down there.
Determine that at the last meeting, yeah.
And I'm still, because it's all tied to this thirty thousand, contractually, the current vendor knows that this is the direction we're going?
Yes.
Okay.
We've had a long conversation about the current.
Okay, and there's no issues with that?
No, because quite honestly, even if the town goes forward and approves the capital, doesn't, it's not saying that he can't bid for it.
Oh, correct. No, no, but there's no contract that he thinks he's in.
No, this is the last, this is the last, the lease is coming up this summer, September twenty.
Yeah. But for instance, one of the vendors whose names keeps coming up and I was viable is, is Roost, which is, is up here on- The post road, kind of equidistant between the two, the two beaches. And they interestingly have opened a location in Stanford in the new Erby building. And I've been over there because it's very close to my office and I've talked to a number of the staff because they're the folks I've gotten to know here. And they went in after the building was designed and they have a very limited kitchen in Erby. Like, they don't have nearly what they have here in Darien or down in Greenwich. And they're already challenged there, you know, I go over certain days to get my favorite salad and they've run out of it. They can't make anymore. They can't make the chicken fingers, which are delicious. I mean, just, they're, they're very, very limited and, and the way this building is designed, there's nowhere for them to expand the kitchen. So, you know, the workers are already like, you know, this isn't, you know, if you're used to a Darien store, you're, you're not going to get, you know, we can't deliver to you without running back and forth between the locations. So, so even what I would consider an outfit that offers healthy options has really certain kitchen needs to really fully offer that.
Next up is to, it's the equipment replacement program and we're asking for sixty thousand dollars to replace a dump truck. The current truck is in poor condition. The dump truck bed is rotting away. We would move to stainless steel body. It's anticipated that this truck would last for twenty years.
Is that what DPW is using?
I don't know what DPW is using, but-
You guys can wash your trucks in the wash station.
Right, right. So the longevity is going to, yeah.
That's going to increase the life.
Getting all the salt off.
Then we have an ongoing program to replace playground equipment. We're trying to replace pieces that on an annual basis to refresh the parks and keep them safe. So this is just an annual.
Do you have a priority list of items or parks that you look at, yeah?
Yes.
You know, we have to buy a bunch of playground stuff for the new school. If it helps in the buying to get a better price, let us know.
Okay.
Yeah, because they're not cheap.
Yeah.
Are you looking at playscapes or are you looking at individual?
It's two.
Probably yes.
No idea.
Yes, probably yes. Very large items.
Not what I'm getting involved with.
Not the individual pieces.
There is a group meeting tomorrow, I think, talking about starting the discussion on all that stuff.
They're expensive, yeah.
Yeah. They can range anywhere up to three, three hundred.
Yes, minimum.
And we're getting away from that here. We're not focused on playscape units.
Individual slides, swings.
Okay, next up is tree replacement. So, you know, as we have the tree maintenance where sometimes we may be taking out trees, this would be replacing trees that-
I like that.
Where we can. This is something we do every year.
The very bottom line says no impact on us having to hire to plant trees. Do we anticipate that we would have to hire to plant trees? Or will the existing crew be able to do that?
I think our, our crew generally does it themselves.
That's why, that's why I thought. I was just a little surprised to see that.
And it would depend on the nature of how large the tree is, you know, for us buying it.
Yeah, we don't usually buy them that big.
And we've, really, we've been lucky and had tree conservancy for quite a few years that's helped us out with that too, so.
Okay, the next one is traffic study at Cherry Lawn to address the entrance and the exit to the park. Evaluate the traffic. There, there are times of very heavy traffic with the nature center there. And we just want to study it, make sure that our traffic pattern is appropriate, that we have the most safe entrance and exit for our citizens.
Have there-
Yeah, has there been any issues?
Incidents, accidents, complaints?
No accidents, but we've had some complaints this past year. As the nature centers programs had gotten larger, their camps, they're, they had to have, come up with a different way of their drop off so that would alleviate traffic being-
It was not on spilling out into Brookside.
It was addressed though later that week, yes?
Mm-hmm. It was.
Yes.
Okay.
So is there another objective to doing a traffic study? Are you thinking of changing the access points to Cherry Lawn?
If necessary. I think this traffic study will help us take a better look at the amount of activity that's there. And, you know, Jim Plin, who's at the park often, more often than I am, sees on a regular basis, doesn't seem to think that there's a major issue. But yet we ran into that. So at that point, we also have soccer and Little League and gardens and playground and dog walking and soccer. I mean, there's a lot of people coming in and it could be congested at a certain time. But we felt it would be a good thing to get a professional company in there to give us the detail that we're looking for rather than trying to handle this by volunteers or periodic staff dropping by for this.
So the objective is to look at traffic in Cherry Lawn's current amenities configuration? Not anticipating any expansion of activities per se? Is that correct?
Yes.
We'd like to understand what the demands are now so that as we go forward, at the point we're ready as a commission to really address, you know, pieces of the master plan, other items that, you know,
Going forward like a pool or something.
Might be considered, to understand, you know, what the demands are.
Okay.
In the peak period now.
And I presume you would-
I'm concerned if there's not-
The folks in PNC regarding who they utilize for traffic studies to, you know, sort of leverage the talent.
We've gotten an estimate from Weston Sampson so far because they've done traffic studies for us in the past.
So I guess I would just say this too, that if, you know, one of the potential outcomes of the traffic study is that the access is not adequate for the amount of activities and vehicular movements in and out of that park. Have you spoken to planning and zoning about potential opportunities to change it? And if it's things that they would support, I just want to make sure that we're-
I have not-
That we can follow through with what the study actually shows us.
I haven't spoken directly to Jeremy in planning and zoning about this, maybe just in passing. But we have had discussion on the commission level when we had Weston Sampson involved with Park Master Plan about an exit and making the park not just have one entrance and exit. But it didn't make it into the plan, which I thought it did at one point.
Yeah.
But having an egress that would go out. But I think that's another, another value to having the traffic study is to find if the professionals would say, this will help you, you know, if you have an egress out.
Have we done this kind of a study at any of the other parks?
We did a traffic study on Nearwater Lane for Weed Beach.
But not the near, not Weed Beach, but near, on Nearwater?
Indiwood Beach.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
One of the genesis of though, though, to, to be fully transparent, is that we were approached by the nature center this fall because they realized that they had been operating well in excess of the allotments in the special permit that was granted to them in two thousand, if I was not mistaken. Whereby they were accepting more participants in a number of their program. So they had put in an application this fall to get approval to run their programs essentially at the capacity that they had already been running them. And the Parks and Recreation Commission, you know, was asked to weigh in. We as a commission had suggested perhaps that the increases be allowed for perhaps a two to three year period during which the traffic study really could be conducted and, you know, understood. The planning and zoning did ultimately decide, I think it was right at the end of the year or very early in January, to grant the special permit and effectively in perpetuity. So one of the things we're trying to accomplish is really understand it before, you know, the commission could fully weigh in and say, yes, we're comfortable with these higher levels because we had seen some parking impacts, et cetera. But that piece is done. So, so one of the reasons we originally wanted this effectively now no longer exists because they were given that permission.
So we may or may not need this then.
So, but we still, they, they do now have the authority or the ability under their permit to run their programs at higher levels. So to the extent we want to really understand now the impact on our other programs, et cetera, it would help us understand that.
So would it make sense to, to get with Jeremy first to ask her, tell him if there are any restrictions on changes to entrance and egress to the park before we actually spend money for a study? So that any restrictions that there might be could be incorporated into any study?
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I think that makes good sense.
Just, just to make sure. I'd hate to find out after the fact it was a problem.
And at this point though, you have nothing, and looking at your objectives, nothing for next year to change in that park?
Other than we've been, the talk has been surrounding a basketball court.
Basketball court. And so that, that is the, excuse me, the, you know, the five year plan, is that a full court or a half court? Do you know?
It's a full court.
It's a full court, okay.
So that's, that's next. That's our next discussion item.
Next was a request to demolish the existing court. I did not put that forward. I felt without a, without a plan to start reconstructing now, I didn't-
Corresponding renovation.
Yeah, yeah. So we were trying to get some information. I don't know if we've been successful yet in getting a price quote on what it would be to rebuild now.
In that current location?
Just for the background, the genesis of the request as it is and was from the commission was that the current court is in very poor repair.
It's not usable.
It's not usable. The nets have been taken down. It's unsightly, et cetera.
It's unsafe.
And unsafe. The master plan calls for the court to be moved from that location. However, the commission at this time has not really started its really study and really taking up the different recommendations of the Cherry Lawn master plan. Although master plan also ultimately calls for a basketball court at Baker Park. So in theory, if we're going to do a full court, we should be weighing, do we want it at Cherry? You know, what's the impact there? Again, traffic, whatever, versus Baker or whatever. The commission just right now, this just hasn't been on our immediate agenda. In the meanwhile, we felt because we really have been talking to Pam and her staff about trying to present the parks at, at the best quality level, you know, possible and not have things that are broken, unsightly, unsafe. So the commission voted that if we really are not in a position to make a decision about the court, as is that perhaps because it is unsafe, that it's just to remove it and grass it over for now. There's also a very large tree that's really problematic in terms of the roots lifting up and whatever. So the feeling was let's, the asphalt's, it's broken, it's cracked, let's just remove it and grass it over. And that was the genesis of the decision. Again, because the master plan does not call for a court remaining in that location.
Full court or any court?
Any, per the master plan, any court.
But there is use, I mean, it would be used. If there was a half court there, it would be used, yes.
We have gotten some feedback from the community that it, that it would be.
If, I know they're not the same exact dollar amount, but if you had to make a choice between the traffic study and the demo of the court, which one has higher priority?
Well, having heard back from some of the community in regards to the actual space, that's when I tried to get some numbers together for that because I think there's a feeling that it wouldn't take much, too many dollars to put a court back in that space.
To renovate.
Right?
To renovate a half court.
Well, it's a, it's a, I went and measured today. It's an eighty by forty. So it's not, it's not a half court.
Just a place to shoot, really.
To pick up game.
But, but understandably, when I went back and actually broke down the numbers, because the, the vendor that we wanted to use for the full court is strictly post intention. They no longer deal with asphalt at all. So post tension is a concrete product. It lasts longer. We have them on all our Weed Beach tennis courts. It's post tension. But in lieu of not being able to get the asphalt numbers, I went and, you know, looked up exactly what, in that particular space, what it would cost for a junior, which is an eighty-four by fifty. I said we had an eighty by forty. So a junior court is anywhere between twenty-five thousand, forty thousand. This is asphalt. You have everything from site prep, which is a minimum of ten thousand dollars, especially in that location because the site is just, it needs grading and it needs fill and it needs roots taken out.
Is that on top of the twenty-five to forty or is that part of it?
No, they're saying twenty-five to forty. Now I'm trying to break down that twenty-five to forty because, you know, you could be on the lower end or the higher end. Base material and surface, that's- Base material and surface, that's anywhere from ten to twenty thousand dollars. Then you get into your labor, sixty-four hundred, which is two dollars a square foot. You have fencing, which is approximately seventy-five hundred, because it goes anywhere from five thousand to fifteen thousand for fencing. You have your, then you get into your painted lines, your in-ground poles, your backboards, your standard rims. And so, adding that all up is approximately forty-one thousand.
What about the tree?
And that, that has, that has nothing to do with the tree.
May I ask, does that include removing kind of what's currently there? Does that encapsulate that kind of ten grand that we would be spending to take it out?
Yes, although I did talk to Public Works, I had, I had a conversation with Ed about that and whether he would have some town resources to help us with a, you know, excavating and-
To prep the site.
Grading, right? And, and he, he would be willing to, to help with some resources.
Okay.
So, how true that number is could be on the, more on the twenty-five side than the forty-two side. But again, quick numbers, I, I think they're right on in the sense that there's that minimum and maximum.
Right.
But it's not ten, it's not going to be ten.
But you believe the tree needs to be removed?
I think if you want a court there, those roots are problematic. So, either you go strictly to a half court, and I don't know how far those roots go.
I'm sorry, just quickly on the side with the trees, is that cause for tree removal in your tree removal budget?
That's a large tree.
Okay, so that's not part of your, well, we talked about trees before.
No, no.
And if you, if you weren't putting a basketball court there, you would leave the tree?
Yeah, she's healthy.
And I do know we have at least one commission member who's adamantly opposed to removing that tree. She'll wrap herself about it.
Well, does it need to be removed if you do a half court?
I don't know how far those roots go.
It's the root issue of the tree.
What type of tree is it?
Big one. Maybe a maple, maybe, they're big roots, yeah.
Certain trees have higher roots, that's all.
But, and you're proposing asphalt, which then would have the same issue with the roots. How long you think the asphalt would last?
Asphalt is less expensive.
But how long would it last?
It won't last as well.
Five years or is part of it?
Depends on how well it drains and I mean it's-
So, let me ask this question. And I, I do want to acknowledge that I asked for this request because we don't really like to spend big dollars for demolition on something unless something's going in its place and that can all be wrapped into one project. Why does the demolition cost ten thousand dollars?
Oh, the demolition in the budget?
As you proposed, that was a number.
We, we really were at a, at a point during our budget discussions that we wanted to put something in place there and it was a guesstimate.
Why, why does it cost anything actually? I'm just curious if it can't be done with town labor and, right?
Could, if we have the, I'm, I'm speaking for them, our crew and Ed, but I suppose it can be. If he's willing to, this, that number was put in place before I had a discussion with Ed.
And that, I suppose, may be a question of fitting that into the priorities and time. I have no idea how long it would take, but I think it'd be a good opportunity to explore.
I don't think too long. I mean, it's an eighty by forty asphalt space. And, but you have, you know, you have the fencing that needs to be removed and there's that, there's grading that needs to be done.
Is the fencing unsafe?
I wouldn't say it's unsafe, it's unsightly.
It's unsightly.
I know we've heard a lot of requests for this half court, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the problem, the problem is that we don't have basketball anywhere else, right? And people in this community love basketball, they love basketball. So, you know, if you were looking to put some, you know, standards and down, you know, on a tennis court even, so that kids could play when tennis wasn't being played, I don't even know what I'm saying, but, or down where the backboard is down at Weed Beach, it, it seems unfortunate to live for a period of time that we don't know how long we're going to live without a basketball court, because we can't assume that we're going to approve it next year for construction. So, we just want to make sure we have basketball somewhere.
And in our Parks Master Plan, it was, it was stated right next to the, the grassy area, either in front of the tennis courts that are there now or behind. But then we have some commission members that, you know, don't want to give up more green space, so.
Right.
There's a real push-pull on Cherry Lawn, because many people feel that it's, the demands on it are already quite high and that there's not enough green space and whatever, so.
To remove green spaces throughout?
Just in general, yes. So, when the commission gets to the point where we're really going to take up Cherry Lawn, I think it's, it's going to be very contentious. I wouldn't want to use that word, but okay.
Do we, do we have an inventory of what schools have outdoor basketball facilities? If any?
I don't.
I don't.
I know some of them are not, yes, I know Hinley does.
Yeah, but it, there's, wasn't one of the hoops down? One of them rather, I think was down, there wasn't a car that had backed into it. I'm not sure what, if they're a hundred percent at all, the schools, I don't know.
The other thing to remember too, is that if we do entertain the possibility of putting a court, even if we were able to get a junior court in there by taking down the tree, we do have a tree account to replace the tree.
Right.
And put it in a location that's not directly behind a hoop.
So, this could be done.
Can we ask back on the commission, was it the, either the, so the commission or the master plan, as far as Cherry Lawn goes, could you just, what the feeling is, should we be putting a court where this tree is? Or you think commission members don't want to take off any green space at Cherry Lawn? Or the master plan says to move it to Baker? Just want to make sure about this tree. The master plan has concepts and it's suggested and, you know, based on the work with the consultants, everything, identified potential locations for different amenities in town. So, for the full-size basketball court, the two places that were identified in the master plan were Cherry Lawn and Baker. In theory, you could have it at both, if money was no object and everybody wanted that. So, the commission has taken the approach that we're not necessarily doing things piecemeal. So, we're not just like, okay, we'll just, you know, let's talk about a basketball court. Whenever we were going more holistically with regard to working on specific parks.
Okay.
So, right now, between the discussions that are going on at Pear Tree and the desire to finish Weed Beach, which we've been talking about capturing that poor part for the six years I've been on the commission, and we're still not done. The commission really is focused on the two beach properties at this time and really hasn't moved on to other parks, because-
Understandably.
We have limited capacity, frankly. So, the concern was to make a one-off decision, to do something outside of the master plan.
On this one particular?
On this one particular item.
Given the-
Without kind of looking at the whole picture, which has to do with traffic, which has to be with, you know, some discussion that Cherry Lawn is overburdened, with some discussion that it's getting paved over. Some folks don't like the fact that the baseball field, the gate is locked half the year and that's basically closed off to the community, therefore reducing. So, there's just a lot going on with Cherry Lawn that we need to get our arms around at some point. So, the discussion we had during the budget was if the court is unusable and unsightly, perhaps we should for now just grass it over until-
And Kate took that out.
We are ready.
And I took that out.
But Kate took it out and then we did have two members of the community come to our last meeting and implore us to find a way to at least fix the existing court to keep something there. Which the commission is willing to take up again if there's a desire to provide the funds-
I'm hearing the same thing.
To do that, but it's not a five thousand dollar fix.
No, no, it's twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Right.
So, I, I cannot speak for the commission members, I can only say based on the discussion we had at our last meeting, but we only had five of our, well, existing eight members, we're down a member right now at that meeting. But based on that, there was some willingness to reconsider it if funds were made available to, to put it back. But I can't speak for the whole commission because not all members were there.
We do have a meeting next week.
Questions, comments?
But I think it will be hotly debated, I don't think it's like, oh, yes, if you give us the money.
Sure.
But I'm hearing from different people in town that there is a request for a half court to make that a useful space, yeah.
Understood, so.
I just didn't feel, you know, budgeting to remove something was as higher priority as other requests that were positive actions.
Except that it's possibly unsafe and it is unsightly and the commission is focused on, you know, making sure that the, you know, the parks are attractive and, you know, appealing and we're not leaving things that are kind of decayed or it just doesn't present in the, with the manner that the commission would like to. And certainly, as we've gone through the Pear Tree discussions, you know, we all hear criticism as well, you know, the department's not doing a good job of taking care of the parks now. What makes you think you can take care of this? So, we need to present, you know, well-maintained parks and having a cracked, unusable court doesn't really do that. And, and I would consider Cherry Lawn to be one of our premier parks in town, so, you know, we need to think about that.
Would you-
What we want to, how we want to present our facilities.
Would you consider using your playground equipment money? I mean, I know they're, they're separate items, but I see playground equipment and, and other park equipment, I don't really, unless you tell me that I need to make a distinction, you know, is it possible to redirect those monies to?
I would take out the high priority of trying to re, to implement new swings inside Cherry Lawn, which are really old.
I see, okay.
And that would be a pretty expensive job, because we can't use the current frame, which makes it a more expensive job.
And that's a very heavily used playground for the small town.
So, unless I'm missing something, if you remove the existing court and you grass it over, you've added green space. So, if you put a basketball court someplace else, you've now taken away some green, you're net zero change. So, the real issue, it seems to me, is whether you have too much traffic or not on the property.
Unless we ended up putting the basketball court at Baker.
Different issue entirely. I mean, I don't, I don't think that worrying about taking away green space is, is the issue, because you're eliminating one space and replacing it with another.
Although you'll be making a much bigger court.
How much bigger? I don't know, I don't know how big the court is.
Eighty-four by fifty is a junior and a ninety-four, a regula, regulation is ninety-four by, I thought I had it right there, ninety-four by-
So, what was there was bigger than a half court?
What's there now currently is an eighty by forty, which is slightly smaller than a junior-sized court.
But what's a half court?
I don't know.
And the quote is for an eighty by forty?
Eighty-four by fifty.
Eighty-four by fifty.
If a full-size court is ninety-four, right, the only potential difference would be the width. The width could, instead of, the width instead of being fifty, could be like sixty or something like that, right? So, if a full-size court is ninety-four, you know, do some quick math here, you know, half of that to get to a rough estimate of what a half court would be, plus you need some perimeter around the, the edges of the court, right, for safety's sake, you know, those kinds of things. But it would, it could potentially be smaller than the space.
I like Kip's comment about the green space, if we grass that over, then we're not really taking away green space.
The only risk I see is that we live for a number of years without basketball. Because there's no guarantee that it'll get funded next year.
Right, right. Now, Jamie, I think you're aware that a few members of the community have represented that they thought they could raise private funding to pay for at least part of this.
Part of a new full court?
No, part of fixing, replacing the existing court in the existing location.
Have you gotten any indications on how much private funding could come to support that?
They indicated about half.
So, are we talking half of forty or half of twenty-five?
We didn't get that detailed, there was just a representation.
Well, now that we know forty-
There was a representation, I think you know, discussing-
May I ask?
That they could have happened, that the feeling was that the, they wouldn't want to do more than half because they feel that the town should be putting up, so.
If we were to get a quote for a half court, which would be slightly smaller than the quote that you have, and then put the tree in it, could we find out maybe what those numbers are?
Of a half court?
Yeah.
So, it's-
Might be smaller and then we put the tree work in there, maybe that might be-
Or we move it, like we grass over and put it in another spot. And have you identified a spot which this other?
Well, a full, a full court, a full court.
I don't think you would put a half court where you planned to put a full court.
No, no.
But is there a way to adjust in proximity to the current facility? A half court-
Yes.
That allows you to keep the tree?
I believe so, outside of the fact that I don't know how long those roots are, that's all I'm going to say. So, obviously, you would take a look at that space and say the furthest away from that tree, right? So, you'd have the back hoop that's there now, that's-
With the furthest set.
Has the woods to its back would be where the court would be. My inkling is that you could do that. I don't think the, the roots would affect that.
Maybe we can get the quote.
I think it's far enough, I mean, you're talking about eighty feet, so, but again, I'm not an expert on trees, so.
We'll learn to see if you can get some cost information on that.
For a half court, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So, I think we at least need a sense of your meeting, given that we have a commission meeting next week and I need to be setting the agenda in the next couple of days, whether at least conceptually this is something we should be revisiting, because the commission's vote in December was to request funds to, you know, you know, remove. Just, just remove it and grass it over since it was usable.
I think it's fair to share with them that that request has been cut by the town administrator and at least one other Board of Selectmen member doesn't believe that it's a wise use of ten thousand dollars. And we'd like to ask the commission to, you know, consider what, you know, if there's a, an alternate plan, so that we can somehow keep a basketball facility in operation while you're determining the optimal location and timing for a full court in one of your town parks yet to be determined.
That alternate plan is going to involve, you know, capital in this, in the budget.
Correct, correct.
I'll get you that number.
Okay.
Thank you, thanks.
You're welcome.
But am I hearing that there's at least a willingness to consider that?
I think you need to have an estimate of what the cost would be.
I know that.
Twenty?
Yeah.
So, I don't think it's going to be.
No, I don't want to go out the commission, say we cut it, because then, then they say, okay, well, we, we don't have the money, we can't get rid of the mess that we have now, but we're not going to be allocated. So, then we're just-
Ten to twenty.
We're just where we are.
I actually think you can probably get rid of the mess that you have now that ends up being that by using town labor.
Oh, yeah, I was right, right here, junior half court, ten to twenty.
Ten to twenty for a junior half court. So, in theory, this money could be repurposed. Perhaps there is a community contribution that could make up the balance. I don't know if that's true, I'd have to try and ascertain that. You know, we're, we haven't gotten to the part of our process yet where we make changes to the budget. So, I know it's unfair for us to do that work before we get commission input.
Can I go back on the traffic study, to the Nature Center? Did you talk to them about the traffic study, are they interested in taking part of that?
No.
Sorry, you asked them and they said no?
Yes, because they don't think that it's a, they felt that they had, had a solution to the problem that was existing with their program.
Okay. They meaning the Nature Center or are they meaning the commission?
Go back to the Nature Center.
So, therefore, as a commission, we still felt that the park is rather busy and there could be some detail that could be pulled out of that to make sure that we're doing, you know, because it may continue to get busier.
Okay, Weed Beach tennis courts? They need to be repainted, should be repainted every five to six years? The courts are now seven years and in need.
This also includes a little bit, there's twenty different areas of slight regrating that needs to be done as well, so just to give a little bit more detail on that.
Can I ask a question? So, when they were flooded, when we had some of the flooding issues, that probably hastens the repainting schedule on this event.
This is the post-tension courts, I couldn't answer that.
I'm just curious.
I wouldn't, you know, if, if, I think we've gotten more life out of the painting than we should have.
Yeah, is it epoxy? Because I know epoxy paint is much better than the alternative, it's longer lasting.
I mean, they're chipping, they're not, they're not horrible, but they're, we're just off-schedule with them.
Again, they're, they're starting to show signs of wear and not, not the way they should be.
I'm going to just break here and say, I think that we should go do a little field trip. Look at some of these things.
Yeah, the commission did a field trip in October. We were not able to get to all of the parks, but we had- of the parks, but we had some of the key parks and really, and then we had a good debrief at our following commission meeting and really one of, of the takeaways what was that as a commission we were very unified, that we, we want to hold the parks to reasonably high standards. We don't want to see chipped paint, we don't want to see moss on the gazebo roof, we don't want broken water fountains, we don't want tennis courts that, you know, are chipping and not looking good. We feel that, you know, we have beautiful parks and that we have an obligation to maintain them to a good standard. The commission was very unified and we did hit the park and I know that commission said that in the spring they'd really like to do another morning and get out and-
Hit the ones we haven't.
And hit the ones that we hadn't gotten, gotten to.
Okay. Well, we'll go out and look specifically at your capital requests, so.
Back on the tennis courts, does anyone else use those courts aside from parking wreck? I mean, in residence, schools use those?
High school.
High school uses them.
They do? And how do they-
Cherry Lawn.
I never should've known that, but how do they contribute to that expense?
They don't.
They help closet?
So there's, there's no barter of any kind? Parks just allows them to use, give them certain blocks of time?
I believe there's some barter, they, they also do some, allow us to use their facility in the summertime, some of the summer camps that we have. I don't know if it's that particular tennis versus-
Well, it's part of a bigger picture, but that would be interesting to know because, you know, spending sixty-six thousand, do they contribute or part of a bigger picture?
Even with our paddle courts, we allow them to use our, the high school kids at the time when it's not very busy, they come in and play paddle. But again, I do, I have heard many times about Jim saying that they also are very generous with some of their space at the school that we get to use.
Okay.
That's good to hear.
As long as you feel as though there's a fair arrangement.
So far so good, I'm gonna dive deeper into it.
Okay.
Quid pro quo.
Which is fine, as long as we understand it's where we are in that, quite versus the pro.
And, and they're public courts too, so we could find non-residents using our courts, they're public. Oop, there's that five.
Okay.
He's fine.
Okay, the last item is a, it's a blower. It's a stand-on blower and I approved it because this will help with the efficiency of the crew and save on overtime with, especially considering that we've taken on more parkland to maintain with only a minimal increase in the staff. Anywhere we can get efficiency is a good thing.
Okay. Questions on the stand-ons, fair blowers?
No.
Okay. Any other questions for Pam and Lori? Okay. Jack?
I want to go back to the concession. Number one, I do very much support what you were saying Jamie, because I think the question really is, should we be doing concessions, but should we be doing food and then how do we want to deliver that food? It may or may not be concessions, and that's for both periods, but I was wondering-
Jack, can I stop you for a second? Can you repeat some of that? I can't hear you. I don't know if you can say no.
I think, I, I support what Jamie said, but I think if we take it level up, the real question, not just for weed, but also for the fair trade, is should we be providing food? And then when you decide if the answer's yes, then the next question is, how do we provide that food? So maybe it's partially through vending machines, which I know certain things.
I'm just gonna stop you here for a second because I think I asked Lori that question and she said that the commission affirmed that they want to provide concessions at Weed Beach in a very similar way to the way concessions are being provided today.
Okay. My, but my question to really go on that is, I think by hearing that we're investing thirty thousand dollars, we're already getting three thousand, we're investing thirty thousand, there may be some other maintenance costs, I'm wondering if we might be able to look at whether there is a return on investment analysis that includes the ongoing costs or the estimated ongoing costs, just so that we understand, as they say, five-year investment return, is this a ten-year?
We will work on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for Pam and Lori? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, we will move right on to fire marshal.
Fire marshal.
Do you want to take it in different order? Do you want to take it in order in the book?
That would be so much easier.
Okay, let's do that. Let's start with Darian, then go to Nuroton, Nuroton Heights, fire, commission, fire marshal.
Okay. So, one of the challenges we have with the fire departments, and I spoke to this when I presented the budget to yous, and you can see first thing on page ninety-nine, getting some of the information statistical is difficult. Getting the detail, you know, behind their budget numbers is difficult. And again, I think we're asking a lot of the volunteers, it may not be something that is there-
For the data.
Yeah, for the data, I mean, you know, they're giving us a lot of time for the firework and, you know, asking for all the southern information, I think, you know, maybe, just asking a lot. What I did basically in, in this budget is level funding. There were increases in some areas that I didn't believe were reasonable, were justified. In number eight.
Page one hundred?
Page one hundred, sorry, yeah, line eight.
Facility repair and maintenance.
Yeah. I'm sorry, line seven, it was, my notes, I have the wrong line number in my notes.
Equipment, repair and maintenance.
Equipment, repair and maintenance.
Yep.
They had asked for thirteen thousand five hundred more. No? I'm going back to being line nine, or line eight. Which one was it that I cut the thirteen point out of?
Facility repair maintenance.
Okay, so line eight, facility repair maintenance, they'd asked for an additional thirteen five hundred, it was for an item that we felt belonged in capital, it, so that's why it's not in the operating budget.
That's why it dropped so much.
That's why, why the request was cut so much.
And also, but it went down from-
Well, no, went down from the current year because they had some special, they had some higher expenses, unusual expenses in fiscal nineteen. So that was not a good year as to-
The fifty-six?
Yeah, that's not something to judge against.
Right.
Manneration.
There, the biggest chunk of this building, or this account is twenty thousand, twenty-seven thousand dollars for maintenance of the building. We didn't have a lot of detail behind it, but I approved it based on reasonableness compared to prior year actuals.
That thirteen-five was a request to replace some leaking heat piping.
Yeah.
That's in capital.
Yes, we moved it to capital.
Yep.
Included in, so if I go back one line to seven, equipment repair maintenance, that ten, there's two thousand dollars new, that is for testing the first tool pump, so that's a new item. And I believe necessary. And then we go down to number ten, it's, you know, this was, the bulk of that account had been moved to radio maintenance and, in the prior year. So, I'm not sure why it appeared again here, but we had moved that. They had some minor increases, but a lot of them just, they didn't appear justified, like rounding up numbers or just adding percentages on, so.
I'm sorry, you lost your focus. Could you repeat what the radio is in?
The telecommunications, I'm sorry, line ten.
Okay.
The reason for the reduction is that, that budget had been combined with the radio, the bulk of that budget had been combined with the radio repair last year. You see the line just above it, thirty-eight ninety?
Correct.
Yeah.
From a top-line perspective.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to think of a better way to track that so it's more transparent, that's what I was thinking.
To track what we'd done the year before?
Well, just to, or to make notations that you're moving monies from one line to another. That's right, you verbally have done it.
So again, generally speaking, you know, we kept a level-funded budget.
Question mark. On total department expenditures, line five on the next page?
Yeah.
Okay. You're two hundred thousand dollars, then you dropped last year at a hundred and seventy-four, which you're now, was, what was the basic reason for the drop? Was it you getting after them saying, no, we're gonna put stuff that you're expensing into capital?
No, you know, to accommodate some things, one, they had an unusual expense in the facility repair maintenance that drove the budget off last, in eighteen nineteen, drove it up. But also remember, we went from, we were still trying to get used to our paying the bulk of their bills directly rather than giving them the grant. So there's been a lot of moving parts.
Right. Didn't they put some of their expenses into the fire, into the commission?
We moved the medical last year.
So there's lots of things that changed.
Yes, we moved all the, we moved the training last year, so there's a number of things.
Yep.
I just wanted, I knew we talked about it last year, just wanted to refresh my memory as to why that took a, took a dive, or stepped down. It wasn't because we were saving money.
No, no. Should we, we can do all the fire department capital, all the fire capital loss.
Yes, sure, yes.
So then, next up is number-
I was a little confused, they have two engine number thirty-ones, but that's okay. On page one oh two. One, is that one of the real old ones?
One is the really old one.
The yellow one?
I believe so.
The purple?
We don't want to talk about that.
Antique-y one?
Yeah.
Don't want to talk about it.
Fun ones.
Okay, so, you'll see, number nine, line nine, facility repair maintenance, slight increase there, trying to be in line with historic actuals. Going down to line eleven, you see the big decrease there, that was because we had special, we had the transfer in this year of eighteen thousand dollars to repair the fire pump on the boat. So we won't see that again next year. So that's why the decrease of eighteen thousand dollars, that's line eleven. But generally speaking, again, this one is actually down a little compared to the revised budget, but remember we gave them eighteen thousand dollars more during the year. So again, just trying to keep it basically level-funded. One of the challenges we face with the three departments is trying to find some uniformity in how they address certain issues.
Equity.
Equity, but even, even just like, if you were to look at the calls on their performance measures, you know, trying to get them to use the same terminology and give us, track the same categories.
And just as a informational item for new board members, and we'll get to their budget, there is a fire commission, but it's not a commission that is seated and appointments made by the town.
They are not independent.
They're, yeah. It's just made up of representatives of the three fire departments, so it doesn't function in the same way that a town commission functions.
What authority do they have with any, over this budget?
Over the individual department budgets, but they have, there's a fire commission budget that handles certain expenses. They do have, how do I put this? One of the things that they do is they meet to approve when one of the departments wants to get a new vehicle paid for out of the vehicle replacement fund. And the fire commission will meet to agree whether or not they should replace the vehicles. I don't think I've ever seen them say no.
They take turns?
Well, they have a schedule. They do coordinate training, like they, we've gotten them to work on doing the training wall, like the firefighter one classes through the fire commission. They coordinate the testing of the equipment, the hoses, the ladders.
They manage the fire training facility at the transfer station. But I just wanted to make sure that you understood that it wasn't a traditional town commission.
It's not an oversight commission in the same way like say the police commission is. Okay, so the heights, the third of our three departments. Again, same with the other ones, this is the only one that's up a little bit, but I was trying to level fund this one as well.
Kate, they're primarily responsible for all the ninety-five calls that-
Ninety-five is shared by Darian and Nuroton Heights.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah. Depends on where you have your incident.
Yeah, that's true.
The only one that does not have primary responsibility for the ninety-five is Nuroton.
Yeah.
In line seven, one of the reasons for the increases there, they have two major repairs, one to tower, to truck twenty and one to engine twenty-three. Neither one of them came to the level that we felt it should be in the capital fund, so that's why you're seeing the bump up there. I would expect it should, this account should return to normal next year, in fiscal twenty-two.
Are there savings on heating fuel or natural gas?
So, they are going to, they've actually, you know, we did the work to get them there.
Right.
So their estimate for what they would use was a little bit, you see on the cut list, their, their estimate was, I'm not sure they knew how to estimate going from heating fuel to natural gas. So I talked to Ed and got the magic formula. And that's what we, so that's, the number for heating fuel is based on them being on natural gas next year.
Right, okay.
The one thing I'll say, twenty-one, the uniforms, I did cut it. They wanted to buy ten parade trench coats and I felt that the town shouldn't be buying things that are for the parades. So I cut those.
Can you explain what the grants are?
So, we used to, we used to fund a lot of their operations through a grant. We only paid for certain things directly and we were giving them grants, fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars, right? They were unequal between the three departments. I think the odd thing was the smallest department was getting the largest amount of money. So we went to, about three or four years ago, we went to where the town is paying for things like the electricity, facility repair. We're paying those bills directly and we really cut back what we give them in grants. They use them, these are unrestricted grants, they can use them as they see fit. I'll tell you, the heights uses it to pay for meals for firefighters that will be on call on weekends, they'll, they'll actually even sleep at the firehouse. So that's what they use it for. I'm trying to remember if the other two gave us descriptions of what they use the grants for. I believe Nuroton may use it for some of the costs associated with Memorial Day parade.
So they could use the ten grand to offset the parade trench coats, for example, they could use-
Yeah, or they have, they do all have other sources of money.
Right.
We're not their sole source of funding.
And that's not, we don't have that information as far as?
You know, we have that information as far as it's available to the general public.
And as far as office supplies, looking at those are, office supplies, for example, is that coordinated amongst the three? We'd handle that or each department, there's no coordination?
There's no coordination.
Why?
They all really operate very independently.
They do, you know, it's, and, you know, where I've said that I think at some point we're going to need some kind of administrator, there's going to be a bit of a battle. there's gonna be a bit of a battle to, depending on how it's done, to have somebody who's working with all three. You know, you might get them to...if they find volunteers within their groups that like numbers and are willing to, you know, do this kind of thing, I think that would be terrific. But, you know, like, they each have different styles turnout gear. And we've tried in the past, say, you know, couldn't you buy your turnout gear together? Oh, well, we don't always need it at the same time, and they don't always like the...they don't each like the same style. It's...and there's no one to date who's willing to force the issue. So... Fire commission. So we talked a little bit about what their...what their role is already. The training services line, number three, that covers firefighter one training for twelve firefighters. Professional services. That provides a number of different things. Like I spoke before about the testing of the equipment. They have to have the hoses tested, the ladders tested regularly. We also provide funding in there for an EAP for the firefighters, employee assistance. There's advertising for new members. Line six, the medical, you see that it didn't exist before the current fiscal year. That's sixty-five thousand. That was in the three individual budgets. Interior rated firefighters are required to get physicals on a regular basis, and we pay for them. The...the cost of each physical might depend on the individual firefighter, but there are certain things that have to be done with each one of them.
So we might have a more accurate number next year, based on the actuals for this year?
You know, it's difficult because some of them may have their own private insurance, and they put it through their insurance.
Right.
Others don't, so they put it through the towns. And the number of people who go every year, you know, if somebody's retiring and we don't have a replacement, we may not have the same number every year.
Is the annual income?
Annually, yeah. What other notes did I make on this? Software maintenance and support, that's for an emergency response system that all three departments use. We have an increase in the equipment repair and maintenance due to the Sea Legs vessel. We have to have maintenance allotment for that now. It's the one...it's kind of a amphibious vehicle. It was a gift.
Oh, okay, that's...
And that's why we have to accept gifts, because gifts can come with a cost.
I remember that. And we did talk to them about, you know, if there are plans for other equipment to be gifted to the fire departments, that we need to be notified about that so that we can prepare for accepting the ongoing operating expenses of those gifts.
Yep.
No one's offering a hook and ladder, are you? Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The hook and ladder is gonna...yeah, that's a lot, and, you know, the rescues are a lot, too.
Probably six hundred.
The rescues? No, five million for the rescues.
Oh, a million, okay.
The engine, six hundred. Yeah. Facility repair maintenance, that's the drill tower, snow removal, mowing, portable toilets. Can't use proof bags up there. Thank you. And telecom, that's fiber optic lines to the...to the fire departments, to the buildings. And then in fifteen, we have wireless. That's the communications for the iPads that are in each of the trucks. And then the last thing I'd highlight is sixteen. That's the emergency dispatch. That's CMed for dispatching the fire, which, if you approve the three new dispatchers in fiscal twenty-two, we should be able to get rid of that.
Okay, this part adds the CMed part.
Adds the CMed. That's CMed for the fire.
Fire, right.
As opposed to CMed for the post.
Correct. Only question as you leave that page is, just small thing, but on one twelve, the accomplishment objectives in two thousand twenty, nineteen twenty, the new fence is repeated for objectives in two thousand twenty-one, so I didn't know what they were talking about.
Yeah. Well, so, you know, going back to some of the issues that we've had with trying to get them to do these things.
Okay, so they can make it clear. I understand there's a capital item in the back.
Maybe they were hoping we'd given them money for it this year, but we're planning on for next year.
And they kept the old one in, I got it.
Okay, so then next up is the fire marshal.
I'm sorry, can I just go back on...
Yep.
Just like dues and professional services, I guess it is...I'm trying to get the idea as to why do we have so many things in so many buckets? The dues and professional services, we have it at Darien Fire Department, but they don't seem to have it at Norotin. And then we see it again on a commission level. So, Darien... I guess it's more indicative that...should we be rolling more things into the commission for them to be accountable for and allocating? Again, I'm not per se this budget, but it's...
Okay, Darien, it wasn't Darien that had it. Norotin had it.
Looked like Norotin got it.
Norotin had got it in the past, and it was a...it was dues for Chiefs Association?
I'm surprised they haven't paid anymore.
Someplace we weren't gonna pay anymore.
Okay.
Okay? And actually, we'd cut it out of the current year budget, and the bill sneaked through. So they were the only ones asking for dues for this organization, and we cut it. Okay? You'll have to help me out on what the fire commission dues is.
Again, I don't need to get...I don't wanna get into too much of the weeds here, but just the concept. Why isn't this all just rolling up to the commission level?
I think I'd like to find what the...
Okay.
What it is first, before I answer that.
Okay. At first, I thought it rolled up, and then I saw it didn't roll up, 'cause two of the three have it in their line. Fairfield County Hazmat.
Okay, so I get that one, that Fairfield County Hazmat unit, that's something that would be all three.
But Norotin's not asking for anything.
Norotin Heights and Darien did not have it. Norotin was the only one asking for it, and we cut it.
So there's a difference.
We said we shouldn't be paying for it.
There's also a difference. Norotin has dues and professional licenses.
That's the one we cut.
And Norotin Heights has professional services, no dues.
Right, professional services is tax prep.
Right.
They're five oh one C three, so just that one? No, they actually...I think they all have... Darien does not.
And Darien doesn't have it either.
Right, but Norotin and Norotin Heights both do.
Maybe they have an accountant.
They have an accountant, yeah.
Who's a volunteer fireman. So I think what I'm trying to say is no one has dues and professional licenses anymore, except for the commission.
Except for the commission.
But there's professional services that are in some of the department budgets.
Right, and so those are individual to the departments.
Okay. Okay.
I'm going to the fire marshal now. I'm going to the fire marshal. Okay, so there's no change in staffing at this point, but we will need to revisit that when the redevelopment is done.
Yeah.
So we have four part-time inspectors right now, two full-time inspectors. Although the deputy fire marshal is split between this account and the emergency preparedness. But the thing will be, when these developments are done, we'll be switching from the inspection part of that to inspection of the construction, to inspection of the units, because these are all multi-unit dwellings. They require inspections every unit, every year. So when we get to that point, it's different from building where the bubble's gonna go away, and we won't need the part-timers anymore. We're going to need some level of continued staffing. The question will be at that point, what's the most efficient, cost-effective way to manage what we need? So we'll have to read, you know, take a look at that in a couple of years. In the dues, in the conferences and meetings, number nine. We added training and attendance at the Connecticut Housing Code Enforcement officials hoarding seminar. So in case you didn't know, the fire marshal has to deal with hoarding.
That's becoming more of an issue.
And what?
And, you know, they also handle the blight.
Look at the...yeah, blight.
But even with those things, it's still a reasonable increase in the budget.
Hydrants?
Hydrants, so...hydrants, not good. Got a letter in today from Aquarion. Telling us what our fire service charges will be for calendar year two thousand twenty, but then telling us at the same time that some of the additional fees, they expect an increase on April first, two thousand twenty, and telling us what those increases will be. So if they don't get the increases, this estimate is good. But if they do get the increases that they're talking about on April first, we need to budget approximately five hundred and twelve thousand dollars. But then, at the same time, they drop the bomb that they're also looking to increase the fire services charges, which is the base, on October first. And they're looking for a rate change of seven to nine percent.
Wow.
Uh-huh.
I'm not sure I understand the difference.
So there's...we get charged for the transmission and distribution, so the piping, the number of feet, right? We get charged for the number of hydrants. So that's our fire service charge. Then they charge us for water infrastructure and conservation adjustment and a water revenue adjustment. So there's surcharges on top of the base. So the base is four hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-six call it. And then we get another ten percent for those other two surcharges. So with the increases, they want...it would go up to basically another twelve percent, and if they change our base by seven to nine percent. So we could be looking at an expense of about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Wow, that's insane.
Yeah. And I don't know, you know, we just got that today. I don't know who to talk to yet to see what are the odds that they'll get that seven to nine percent increase that they're looking for?
Yeah.
Do you have to go to PURA for that?
Yes, they do.
That's a big jump.
Yeah, it is.
Well, especially since we're all doing such a good job.
And here's the, you know, the kind of bad thing about it is we don't know what they might be getting in April of twenty-one, which we are budgeting for. If they're getting an increase this April, are they getting another increase in April of twenty-one?
Has that historically happened every year, that every April that they get an increase?
I don't know if it's every year, but...
Has it been for the past several years?
I'd say, yeah, we've...every year it's gone up, and we haven't been adding...we haven't been adding a lot of hydrants and a lot of feet of, you know, water line, so, yeah.
We don't know if this number is correct.
No, no. So I got that today, so, you know, I need a little time to do a little bit more research.
Yep.
But we think it's gonna at least go up to five twelve.
I think at least five twelve, yes. And we know five twelve, based on the, you know, what they're getting on April first.
Are we gonna be adding more hydrants with these developments?
That's a good question. I'll ask that.
If we're pretty confident it's going to five twelve come April, does it make sense to budget that number?
Pardon?
That's what you're saying.
I think you need to budget at least the five twelve?
Yeah.
It's just, how much more than that do you budget?
Well, because we have to be budgeting for the year from April.
Well, for the October increase, which you may go through, and the next April.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Yep.
Okay.
So when you say, you said earlier, it was a base charge of four hundred and fifty-six thousand.
Yep.
Plus the surcharges. So that is the...just the usage of the lines? That's not...there's no water usage in there?
No, no.
Got it. So just to have them?
Yes.
Wow, there's no check on it. Well, PURA's supposed to be the check on it.
Okay.
We don't have the ability to influence it.
Turning off those sprinkles, guys.
Well, this isn't even that.
No, I know, but I just...they've been so hypocritical about that program, and they did this as well, just to win.
Yeah, you're right, you're right. All right, so we're gonna have to add twenty grand.
Okay.
That's unfortunate.
Okay.
Are we going to EMS?
Yeah, we're going to EMS. First is emergency management. This is Mark McKeon, he's our deputy fire marshal, and he's also our emergency preparedness director. And we charge fifty percent of his time to this budget. It is pretty much level-funded. Trying to recall, I didn't make a note here of what the decrease in software maintenance and support was.
I guess interested in the big number called radio repair and maintenance.
Radio repair maintenance. That one, it jumped last year, if you remember, we had...
That's a big jump.
You know, we had a large...we had to take on the maintenance contract for radios. It was last year. It was for...these are all the emergency radios. He manages them out of this budget.
So Paul, when you say, do I mean police and fire?
Police and fire. The system, the basic system behind them, that...not the individual radios, but the units, but the...
Yeah, because we have all those individual budget. That's why I judge it crazy which ones it is.
But there was a big...there was one big change in like a fifty thousand dollar...
Yeah, we see that.
Is that Motorola? I don't know, or somebody else.
Well, the radios are, you know, they are, so...
But the system was somebody else.
Yeah, I don't recall last year what it was.
The one last year was the system that was put in when the police department was renovated. That project included a five-year, multi-year maintenance plan, and there was no plan for after that was done. So it is known here.
It is known now.
Kate, the software maintenance and support reduction was a cost reduction for code red.
Code red, yes.
And then back on radio, number twelve, so we should be expecting that number consistently now?
It should be now stable, yes, yes.
That would exist even if we got rid of the CMed.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, it has nothing to do with CMed.
Got it.
This has to do with their ability to communicate with one another out in the field.
Right. For which they want more radios.
Well, they have to replace them on a regular basis.
But they want one for everybody.
EMS, this is...the professional services is our contract with SEMS. They're guaranteed a certain amount of revenue every year under our contract, whether it comes from us or from the billing of the patients. We are in negotiations with a new contract. It may require a small increase of about five thousand dollars.
Why do we budget such a large drop this year?
It's not that this year we budgeted a large drop, it's that eighteen nineteen was unusually high. They had a decrease in call volume. They changed their billing company, and there was a ramp-up period, and collections were much lower than they had been in the past, but they are back on track now.
You're back on track. But you were concerned originally with what...how much we were actually going to...
Right, but so far, for the first two quarters this year, they're...
Okay, good.
Right in line where we expected. And that's Stanford?
Stanford Emergencies Medical Service. They provide the paramedic...we contract with them to provide the paramedics. So then the other thing I would point out here, line seven, this is the charge for CMed to dispatch the post and also to provide pre-arrival instructions. So between the time, you know, you call and say you, you know, you need an ambulance after the police switch you up to CMed, they stay on the phone with you at CMed even after they've dispatched the post, and they tell you what to do, you know, while you're waiting for the help to arrive.
Is this similar to fire, where this might drop off after if we do the dispatch? No, this stays on, okay.
I...there's no plans right now to bring this back.
Got it.
You will notice that this is...we don't provide a grant to Post Fifty-three in the same way we do the...
You will notice that this is, we don't provide a grant to Post 53 in the same way we do the fire departments.
We do cover expenses on their behalf, though. So. We pay for some equipment maintenance. And you don't see it here, but we provide the insurance for the vehicles and we provide the workers' comp for the volunteers.
The volunteers, that's how you work or stuff?
State law. Firefighters too.
Well, I understand firefighters, the other volunteers too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So now we wanna do capital for the emergency services?
If you're going all the way to the back, it's, in the six-year plan, it starts on page 32. So Darien is first up, small capital, they're requesting 16,500. This is something, this small capital account is something we came up with a number of years back because they always had these small capital life things that weren't hitting our threshold to go into the capital fund. So they were putting them in the operating fund, we were putting them in the operating fund, and we were going up and down in their budgets every year. So we decided, let's give them some money for small capital in the capital fund. They'll be using this to replace equipment meters, hand tools, saws, and such.
Yet this, this fluctuates every year.
It does, it does some.
Okay. As long as they're happy.
Next up is radio replacement. This is something you'll regularly see with the fire service. They usually have a, what would I say? They have useful life, but they replace regular ones, they replace them on a regular basis. And you can see that this is planned to go out for the next four years to replace all the radios.
It never ends.
It never ends.
They, they say they have a useful life of 15 to 20 years, but.
Well, and the reality is, you know, when we get.
They lose them, they die.
When we get down to the emergency preparedness. You know, we have the potential, if a certain law stays in place, where we could be having to replace all the radios.
Agreement.
Yeah. The next one is truck upgrades, they, this is just basically some major repairs on, on several of their trucks.
They have to be kidding, 15, 20-year estimated life?
Well, yeah, the trucks, the trucks themselves have a long life, and this is to upgrade the lighting and.
You're talking about a fire truck?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought they're talking about truck, I think.
No, these are fire trucks.
Thank you. Sorry.
Yeah. And then the last one is the 13,500, the pipes, the leaking pipes.
For Darien.
Yes, that we have taken out of their, you know, operating.
Had we been paying for repairs kind of piecemeal over time, is this a big, would this prevent future?
No, I don't think that, not in this instance. Nuroton, same thing, small capital. They're planning to buy bailout kits and, and replace some small equipment. So you know what bailout kits are?
No.
So this is if they get stuck, like. In a upper window, like, I think it's about 15 years ago. Several New York City firefighters had to bail out of a window very high up.
Yeah.
And several were killed. This is the kind of system that would assist in that, it's a personal rope system where they can, they can attach to something and lower themselves, say, lead to the ground.
We like these.
Yes, we like this.
Do we know? How many stories of a building they're rated for? And will they work with all of the new developments?
That's a good question.
Good question?
Probably not up in Nuroton anyway.
I'm gonna think Nuroton is not going to have any of the new developments?
That's correct.
They might have to, although they would respond, yeah. How many stories?
And how many stories will be in the Heights 4?
I don't know.
I only think three.
I think it's three, we have.
Here you have four, I think.
But is it, so it's two stories of residential above one layer of?
I believe that's right.
So total three, okay.
I believe.
I think you're right.
Down, down here, Darien, I think they're gonna go three.
They're gonna be higher.
They're gonna go three stories. Plus, plus, so it's four.
Well, and it's more, it's not necessarily, you know, how high are the stories?
Yeah, 14.
Yeah, yeah, so I'll ask him that. Again, radio replacement. This is three new portables.
I yield.
We're just never gonna get away from them. The next one is a big one. Nuroton would be the last one that we get on the natural gas. So this is the cost estimate to convert their, them to natural gas, to bring the, the gas into the building. And to do any work needed with the, the boiler, to convert it.
Every source brought the gas line in proximity, right?
Yes, it's on the post road.
It's been in the post road for a long time.
Oh, has it for a long time?
Yes.
Yep.
And then the last thing they have here is $32,000 to replace self-contained breathing apparatus. These have a useful life, they're, you have to replace them after a certain number of years. And I don't know, these are $7,200 per pack. So you're getting about four.
Do you have any idea why that, this department and Nuroton Heights have them in their budget, in their elongated budget, but there's none in the Darien?
You know, it depends on when you buy them, when you need to replace them.
Okay, so this is, all right. Because, I mean, they've gotten, being bought out through 24, here.
I'll ask Darien?
No, I mean, I just. They, in other words, they didn't forget about it.
One would hope not.
Yes, please.
All right, moving along.
More radios?
The Heights, more radios. Yeah. We will never get away from the radios. Until the day we, you know, develop ESP. All right, so this is six radios. Next one up, the self-contained breathing apparatus. They're replacing more, these are six. And I believe that, yeah, no, this should be about the same dollar amount. Do you know if they buy these together in like a?
Savings?
Savings concept, bulk? We're seeing obviously the same. No, I don't believe they do.
I mean, is, is 10 a cost savings? I don't know if, maybe it's not, maybe it is, maybe it's not. Maybe to get those savings, maybe do you need to buy 100?
I don't know.
Yeah, maybe, we should ask if there's a, if there's a regional or statewide bid for this, that even if they buy them separately, maybe they're all paying the same price, you know?
Radio's too.
Right, if these, that we keep seeing these same products, if they're bulk or state or.
Yep.
Are they using as the smartest way possible?
Yes. They asked for two thermal imaging cameras, I did cut one.
Do all the departments have that?
Yes, they all do.
Okay, so is this adding an additional one or giving them?
It is not adding.
Replacement.
Don't believe it's adding.
No.
It was replacement.
Replacement, got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, attic asbestos removal, I just felt this. You know, I guess one thing to point out to you all, we don't own the buildings. But we do, some of the, some of the maintenance and capital improvements, we do undertake, some of them they undertake. I felt that this was one that was important because of the risk of asbestos, that we should fund that.
Who owns the buildings?
Pardon?
Who owns the building?
The fire department's due.
Isn't asbestos that is in an old building only a risk if it's disturbed?
I don't.
Unless it's viable. Unless it's viable.
We've got our own little asbestos.
Hey. My house is from 1850, can I tell you? I mean, the asbestos is similar to the pipe replacement, the cost at Darien, so.
And they could be planning to use it as a bunk room in the future, who knows?
I think they've got a bunk room down in the basement.
Oh, okay, that's right, this is Nuroton Heights, I'm kidding.
That's the poke.
Nuroton Heights is the one that the trucks are on top.
Right, that's right, I forgot.
Yeah, they replaced that floor, you know? Yeah. Okay, so the last thing here, small capital.
This should be maybe.
Why did I increase it?
Yeah.
Probably thought it was too low.
There's a variance.
Something in from their.
From their operating budget. Yeah, the Heights.
Fast-track tool.
Yeah, that's what they had in there, but I moved something from operating to capital and I don't recall what it was.
$4,000, $30, four, four gas meters.
Oh, four.
Two of them.
Two, yes. Yeah, they had requested in their operating budget that we replace two four gas meters. It took me a long time last year to get the concept of, you know. How many meters are we buying? There are four, they, the meters detect four gases, so they're called four gas meters.
Need to buy two.
And we're buying two, so I moved it to the small capital and out of the operating budget. Fire commission, the big thing here is vehicle replacement fund. So. There's a copy of the schedule in the six-year plan, so here's the thing. If you look at that schedule in fiscal '30. I won't be here, but maybe some of you will be. There's not sufficient funding.
Correct.
Deferal.
Well, or reconsider our, the equipment, the level of equipment we have, the number of apparatus we have. Do we need?
15?
Yeah.
Five per firehouse?
So.
That's what we have.
If you reconsider some of the purchases, actually just fiscal '29, if you reconsider one of the rescues, the money works. So that was the basis for my reduction in the, the request. The next item is a fence around the training facility, the fence that is there now is in disrepair. We have, Public Works has done temporary fix to the gates so that they can be closed. But we really do need to replace the fence to.
The tower?
This is the tower, yeah. We, we need to replace the fence and the gate to ensure the safety of that building. Keep people who shouldn't be in there out. The next item is the traffic preemption system, so this is the thing that will turn the lights green for the fire trucks as they're responding to calls. It needs to be replaced, it doesn't need to be replaced yet. But they proposed funding it in three $100,000 increments. My feeling was paper it all when it needs to be replaced, not save up for this one. So I cut that.
Is this an essential product for our town?
If you don't, so I think, you know, it would, it would impact how they respond to calls. Would it? Would it delay their response time such that it hampered, you know, firefighting? You're gonna have to ask them that directly, I know, you know, in New York City.
Oh, yeah.
They don't have it. In New York.
They don't have it?
No, no, they have to, if they are approaching a red light, it does not turn green for them, they have to slow down, check, see if it, if it's clear to go and then proceed through.
Interesting.
But, you know, there we're talking about people who are in firehouses and able to respond directly, so here, you know, we've got the, they've gotta get to the firehouse. So what is the incremental, you know, change we make if we don't have those lights turn green for them? How much time does it add to their response time when, you know, it's already?
Pretty imminent, yeah.
Yeah.
Do we know other municipalities have this system?
Yeah.
It's pretty common in Darien?
Common, I'm, I'm not sure, but it's, I would say that I don't think it's unusual, but I can ask them about that.
I mean, it's really only important for the center of the town.
Yeah, but Darien is really.
Well, we don't have it on every, on every traffic light.
No, no, I understand.
But the center of town one is, that's what you're saying.
That would be where the, you're, it's used.
It's a problem if it's backed up, yeah.
I'll tell you what else is a problem, is people who don't get pulled to the right.
Infuriating. There's also preemption, at least on the ledge and Nuroton Avenue, Post 53. And I'm not sure about the other signals in that, in that sequence of lights, because the firehouse is, you know, two blocks away, so it could be on the other signals as well.
It's a tough sequence.
Yeah.
So this would have to be funded, when did you envision then?
23.
23.
When it gives up the coast, right?
Yes. It's if you look at their request.
Yeah.
That's when they expect to do the work.
Correct.
Extend the concrete pad, this is at the drill tower. They feel the current pad is too small for their, their drills, I don't know if you, where they have a, they have a tool that they can use to train on car fires. So they'd like to increase the size of the concrete pad. I turned it, I turned it down last year, but this year I'm proposing to fund it. Doing it on the pavement continues to damage the pavement, the concrete would be safer, longer lasting. That's it for them. Fire marshal.
More radios.
The, the more important thing here, he had requested a new vehicle for a part-time fire marshal, fire inspector. The one that we have is, we purchased it from Darien when they were replacing their chief's car. It needs to be, it needs to be replaced, but, so the question was, how best to replace it? So I cut it because. I talked to, to our mechanic about what hand-me-downs we were getting from the police department. So basically, we're, we're shifting things around where there was a Ford.
Explorer?
Yes, Ford Explorer, thank you, that we were getting from the police department, that they were going to give to the building department.
Right.
And the building department really doesn't need something of that size. So that is going to go to the fire marshal. And I have, we have budgeted in the Public Works Equipment Replacement Fund for a smaller vehicle that will suffice for the needs of the building department. We now have an opportunity to purchase a used Explorer from another fire department, so we may go that road rather than buy a new small car for the building. We may go the route of buying a used car. the route of buying a used car, but that will be based on the mechanic's recommendation.
So, the capital for those switcheroo's would come out of building?
Would come out of the Public Works Department.
Oh, Public Works, sorry.
Yeah. So, you know, we were looking at forty-six-five for an Explorer all, you know, kitted out for the fire marshal. If we were to get an Escape, we could do it for like thirty or less.
Okay.
So, and that would suffice for the building department.
Right.
Why did you put in sixty-eight thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-three?
In twenty-twenty-three, he's probably going to have to replace either the fire marshal's vehicle or the deputy fire marshal's vehicle. They drive expeditions because they have a lot of equipment that they have to carry.
Okay, well, that's different animal, okay.
And then what we had alluded to before, the radio system, so. Yeah. There's a.
Law?
A law. It's, and it's about bandwidth and, I'm getting a little too punchy to maybe explain the whole thing, but basically.
We can get, I have a ton of information on this, it's a T-band auction, they have to.
We might be forced off of our band.
Correct.
What may save us is that also in the group of people that, or group of communities that would be faced, forced off of their bands would be New York City, LA, and several other large cities, so.
Millions of dollars.
Millions of dollars.
Millions.
Barge is three that I can imagine, yeah.
Yes.
Wow.
Oh, my.
Yeah.
I'll give you information at Mark McKeon provided to me.
Wow.
So, we keep asking at every quarterly meeting, what have you heard?
Yeah.
Nothing yet.
And if, you know, if it were to come to fruition, this is something I would say we should bond for.
Sure.
Because this means replacing all those radios, all of our, you know, all of our equipment that we, you know.
So, would that maybe change and lessen the, the radio requests every year?
No.
Sorry, Kim. Might be different radar, Kim.
I'd pursue that.
I was trying.
We just put them all on the same cycle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, 'cause you replace them all at once.
We have to keep buying them in the meanwhile. The old ones.
Yes, and, you know, and we've asked them as, you know, as they're talking about replacing the old ones, if the cost to buy radios that would work on both bands.
Oh, okay.
Would be exorbitant.
Oh.
So, we're not doing that.
Throw by the old bandwidth, old band.
Yes.
Until this.
New band.
Conversion.
Yeah.
If the law gets, gets through.
And if, you know, even if, there may be other, less expensive ways to manage it. We could move on to a radio system, we could move on to the state's band, we could move on to Stanford's band. We'd have to pay them, but it may be less than having to replace our whole system.
Right.
So, there's a lot to, that'll come up if that law stays in place.
Okay. Okay. That's it for capital?
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe that's it for the evening.
Uh, no, we were gonna talk about debt.
Oh, debt, sorry, yes. That's Jen's.
So, one of the handouts that I gave you shows our estimated debt service for a planned, spring twenty-twenty issue. This is really the only assumption that we have in our debt budget, everything else is based on our current actual debt. So, what we're looking to do is probably issue about twelve million dollars. The one unknown is the Oxford School demolition. We know that activity is gonna be taking place right now, I have a placeholder of eight million dollars in there. All the other items are cleaning up what has been authorized, but is unissued for those purposes. So, the assumptions is that it would be an interest rate of two-point-five percent, twenty-year term, level principal with declining interest, principal payment due after twelve, first principal payment after twelve months. The term, the structure, the principal payment, that is ultimately gonna be the decision of the Board of Finance. So, this is just an assumption for budgeting purposes, but the actual structure and term and principal may be different. So, what this does to us, I did try to pull out Ox Ridge, the, the four-point-one million dollars results in about two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars of school debt service, forty-nine thousand dollars of town debt service, and then the eight million for Ox Ridge demolition adds about another six-hundred thousand dollars.
But we're not gonna spend eight million dollars.
That's what we need to, it's, it wouldn't just be for demolition.
No, I got, I got that.
But it's really a matter of, how much do you think you're gonna spend in the next twelve months?
We're gonna spend, we're gonna spend about a million dollars on demo. We call it enabling phase, but we'll come back to you with our best guess for the first twelve, for twelve months from now?
Uh, twelve to fifteen from now, yeah, 'cause then we'll do another issue the following spring.
Okay.
We don't wanna issue too much, we don't wanna issue too little, so.
Right, right. Are level, are, are declining interest loans, rather than level payment loans, common with these bonds?
Typical, yeah, typical municipal is level payment, level principal, declining interest.
Really?
The Board of Finance on the last two issues, one or two issues, has chosen level payment.
Right.
And they have deferred the principal up to thirty-six months, which is the allowable limit.
Okay. Thank you.
If you're into that stuff, it's an interesting discussion when they have it, because you're looking at different permutations, you know, total cost, you know, the current cost.
It gets really esoteric.
Yeah, if you're into that.
No.
Well, and also looking at anticipated future bonding, right?
Right.
But still maintaining, you know, making sure you don't end up arbitrage issues.
I'm looking to be in the best possible position for refi, if, if it work out, if market's gonna work.
Right, and we do have the potential for a refinancing for maturities that are callable August first, about fourteen million dollars, but we really, we haven't factored that into the budget because that, we won't really know if that's worthwhile until we're much closer to that date.
But new, new issues have, what, a three-year moratorium on call?
Uh, no, advanced refundings have been eliminated, so you can only do current refundings, which are ninety days, maximum ninety days prior to the call date.
But you can put, so, are you talking about what kind of call date would we put into the new issue?
No, I'm, I'm typical one of these loans, we have a, we have a protection, call protection. You can't, you can't call before three years, or if you call.
Right, so, that gets set up when we structure the issue.
Yeah.
The call is part of the structure.
Okay.
And I think we, right now, we're at five-year calls mostly?
Um, five to seven. There was less of an appetite for shorter calls for a while.
With penalties, if you go over a year?
You get, you, your interest rate will go up if you, the shorter your call, the higher rate you're gonna pay.
You pay, you pay a penalty.
Yeah.
Got it, okay. Okay.
Krista, you look like you wanna ask a question?
No, good. Thank you.
Okay, so you need number from us, about fifteen months of spending.
And then the other item that I handed out was related to a question that was posed prior to the budget discussions beginning about what has been surplus for the last few years. So, what I've tried to do at the top of that sheet is give you from our CAFR the breakdown of the surplus and then hone in on what's under our control. So, the revenues that have an asterisk next to it and the town expenditure that has an asterisk next to it. So, below that are, for the last three years, what are the top ten variances that made up those surpluses and deficits? And then below that is saying, if there was any expenditure or revenue item that had a significant variance in each of those three years, let's take a look at what the budget was in nineteen, what it is in this year, and what's proposed, and see if we see any kind of a trend or a flag on those items. And looking at it, it, it's really interesting, in two thousand nineteen, two thousand eighteen, we had significant, even two thousand seventeen, significant surpluses, particularly in our ECS grant, but in nineteen also in our, we had a transfer in from closed funds. The ECS grant was, we had budgeted very conservatively on state revenues. If you look to the third page, in the town administrator proposed for ECS in, actually twenty-twenty and in the twenty-twenty-one proposed, we're budgeting what the state has put out there in their biennial budget. So, we don't expect that kind of a surplus on those, on that line. The transfer in from closed funds was a one-time as a result of some work that F and B did. I mean, overall, I don't think that, nothing popped out to me as we haven't already addressed it either in the twenty-twenty budget or in the twenty-twenty-one proposed, but if you would like some additional information on these, I can provide it.
Is that in the data on the website?
No, it is not, but I can send you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? Twenty-seventeen, Miss Looney's Secret, that's separate from?
Yes.
Oh, it is separate from me, too.
Yeah, that is different. That one was actually, we get a, we got a grant for the body cameras.
Got it.
So, you know, one of the things that happens with some of these, like I'm seeing medical insurance, we often don't have our final rates by the time we finish the budget. And, and usually, you know, what we have is, it's not going to be worse than X. So, you know, like this year, you know, we've been told we won't have an increase, but it is still possible that we'll have a decrease. So, you know, we may not know that, though, until after the Board of Finance puts their budget together. Full-time, the issue is going to be vacancies. They happen.
This is very helpful, Jen, thank you. I'm gonna spend a little time and study it. I think I would say in terms of the ECS grants, this was during the period of uncertainty, right?
Yes, 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 when we budgeted zero.
We were very conservative, 'cause we thought we were, it was gonna be eliminated.
Live numbers or no dollar, I'm not sure.
Because, because there is.
Yeah, variance is the first column, account percent, variance is dividing by zero, 'cause there was no budget for those items either.
So, it was budgeted to be zero?
Yeah, budgeted, right.
Okay, so that's it, telling us what the variance is, not what the amount. That was the full amount that came in.
And for those items, yes.
Budgeted, nothing, got it. Now, I'm just seeing.
Can I ask just a quick question about how you're pushing funding? Time to flip on the revenue side, you provide your sources of funds. On the revenue side, did you also give variances on the uses of funds?
That wouldn't be the revenue, that would be the expenditure side.
Well, but I'm just saying, you know, while some things like ECS, as Jamie mentioned, we conservatively did not, we had zero budget, but we still received funds. Were there revenues, you have a budgeted amount, but it came in short? Is that also on there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, over or under budget, whatever the.
Sorry, it's only 'cause I didn't have the thing in front of me that I.
So, on the expenditures, because we don't end any line in a deficit, they're all surpluses, but on the revenues, it, what is the top ten variances, plus or minus?
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jen on these items?
Just take a look at it, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, that ends our evening tonight. We are scheduled to be back here tomorrow night at seven PM, and it's budget deliberations. So, I'm sure we've all taken notes and we can review by department if you wish. I'm open to suggestions on how you'd like to.
How do you usually do it, by department?
You know, usually, folks come prepared with items that they're considering making an adjustment to, and we, we do it that way, but we can, you know, what I think we'll do is maybe go through each department as it's organized in the book and, and we'll ask if there's any recommended adjustments to those budgets.
And if there are things that you want us to calculate for you during the day, just please let us know.
Yeah. And maybe what we'll do, 'cause it's probably best to start there anyway, I think we'll start with capital. We'll review capital first. Okay? We are officially done.
Thank you.